I'd like to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting at 5:36 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members CO, Mitchell, Dylan, Delarco, and Kamara Sulek. Mayor Pro Tem Girba did connect with me in advance of tonight's meeting, and he will be a few minutes late. From city staff, we have interim manager Green, Clerk Royal, and Parks and Rec Director Scruggs. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless our amendments? I would note that our discussion is really focused on the future of the rec center. It's a little bit more specific than Parks and Recreation. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Dylan, seconded by Mitchell to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We'll dispense with the subsequent motion, and if Mr. Girba is unable to attend this evening, we can excuse his absence at the conclusion of tonight's work meeting. At this time, we come now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Clerk Royal, did we receive any comments in advance of tonight's work meeting?
Not for this meeting.
Okay, and has anybody typed in any questions and comments under the chat icon at the bottom of the screen?
No.
Okay. We'll give folks just a few more seconds. If you'd like to type in a question or comment, reference the rec center and the future of the facility. Getting a little bit of feedback, so make sure you have your phones as far away from the microphones as possible. Okay, the record will reflect that there are no citizen comments. So we come to the one discussion item of the evening, which is the recreation complex. And I'm not going to steal much of Director Scruggs' thunder, but I will make some opening and obligatory remarks. As many of my colleagues will recall, in 2019, my office spearheaded two visioning sessions, which also resulted in the distribution of a patron survey to all rec center patrons. And Ms. Scruggs, or Director Scruggs, excuse me, will talk about that, how many we received and the amount of feedback that we were able to retrieve from those. And then subsequent to all that, we had another visioning session in early 2019. As I've stated on numerous occasions throughout my tenure as both a council member and as mayor, the recreation complex on Woodland Drive is a valued community asset, and it must be preserved. But conversely, it ought not to be an undue burden on our general fund, and it needs to be well-used and accessible to all members of our community. And as such, we should continue to have discussions and dialogues on how we can strengthen and improve this valuable community resource. So with that, Director Scruggs, I'm not sure if I'm missing anything. I'm going to turn it over to you, since you and your staff did much of the heavy lifting on this particular issue. Before I relinquish the floor, was there anything that you think I should have, or should add? Excuse me. You might be muted, Carla.
No. The things were a little bit fuzzy. It's really loud.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but it's really, it's kind of fuzzy.
I apologize for that, and I should have prefaced, and I'll mention this at the beginning of our regular meeting. DPW did install Plexiglas dividers at the dais, and so there's one between every seat and every microphone up at the council table. In talking to our IT director, I think that's having some impact on the feedback. So we'll continue to adjust that and play with it, but our apologies to you and anybody else who's viewing or participating via Zoom. We can hear you perfectly, or at least I can hear you perfectly. Please try your best to speak loud and enunciate, but the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. As you mentioned, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit. Just, I wanted to do a quick recap on where we've been and where we are and where we're going. But in doing this, in preparation for this, I found that, you know, unfortunately, this was a weird time to start thinking about the vision of the rec center or moving into the future, when all of a sudden, you know, four or five months ago, COVID hit us, and it kind of put us into a suspension. And so it was kind of hard to start thinking about these things, but I realized that now is the time. You know, when you talk about visioning, it's not for us right now, but we're visioning for Celineans, you know, 10 years from now, 15, 20 years from now. So I think it is a really important thing to address at this time. Where we've been, you mentioned that we did a very extensive online 52-question survey between April 22nd and May 10th of 2019. We had 382 respondents and gathered thousands and thousands of comments, ideas, suggestions, and those were all tabulate, oh, I'm sorry. And at the same time, we did a, we had two in-person input sessions, one on April 24th and one on May 2nd. We had about 24 people attend the in-person events. And again, you know, we took a lot of time to tabulate all the comments, responses, ideas, kind of categorize them into, here are some things, you know, like programming-wise, good ideas that we could maybe institute immediately. There were several kind of easy things to take care of, whether it was in the facility, you know, some specific suggestions on things that needed to be repaired or addressed immediately. So I found, I found all of the information, the responses, very valuable. We took, we did, prepared an executive summary, I guess, how you would call it, kind of took kind of the top five ideas or responses, the most popular responses, from each of the categories that we were seeking input on. And at the January 15th Community Forum there at City Hall, we had about 33 people attend, plus some staff and city council members as well, to review the responses from the surveys, to discuss some of the ideas, and then open the floor for, you know, questions, ideas, comments, but also to start the dialogue on next steps. You know, what, all right, now that we have the information, what can we do now? You know, what, where do we need to go? And we actually narrowed the discussion down into a couple of things. One is we needed to clarify the vision, you know, and visioning is not easy. I mean, if I could see the future, that'd be great, but, but I can't. But I think, you know, we, we know where Celine has been when we started, we know where we are now, and we really have to kind of dream of what's Celine going to be, you know, in the future, the next, you know, 20, 25 years. And what, what does that mean for the rec center? What, what is it going to look like? What do we need to be off, not necessarily offering, but what do we need to provide to stay up with, you know, the trends and the times and what's going to, you know, the growth? What's our community going to look like? So we talked about being a little bit more specific on clarifying what the vision is, and then also how to fund the vision. You know, obviously with this, with any types of, you know, next steps, you know, like what is it that people want? And I guess some of the, some of the top ideas or priorities that people said during, during all of the survey was to, number one, update the facility. You know, this facility was built in 1991, and since then, we did one renovation in 2006. And so updating the facility so that we can meet the needs of where we're trending towards. There was a lot of discussion and comments about an outdoor pool. There was quite a bit of discussion and comments about having a splash pad. And then some other general, you know, expand, expanding the footprint of the facility, a need for more spaces in the facility for like stretching, for different types of classes or smaller-sized classes, the need for an indoor walking track, kind of updating the lobby and things like that. So those were kind of like the top, the top priorities or the top comments that came out of all of the surveying. And I guess regarding like, you know, what else needed to be done, this, the, in our community forum, the establishment of kind of a serious group for capital fundraising efforts. You know, with any type of, of, you know, upgrade or building of facilities or anything, we need money. So we talked about developing a capital fundraising group. And then also identifying some of those low-hanging opportunities, which don't necessarily qualify for capital projects, but simple things like updating the facility and, you know, painting it, which during this, this mandatory shutdown, we were able to paint the entire facility, all of the weight rooms and lobby area, main hallways, et cetera. We also took that opportunity to kind of fix all the dings on the walls and the corners and, you know, really spruce up the place. So, so, you know, some of those things that were identified in this survey were, have been already taken care of. Other than that, you know, updating the building, painting, putting in new lobby furniture, replacing old weight room equipment, new pool deck, locker room improvements and things like that, those were kind of some of the opportunities that we had to do without, you know, spending great deals of money. Some of the funding ideas or sources that this group came up with would be to do a capital campaign, potentially have issue of millage, incur debt, so as some of our debt is retired in the next four or five years to, to replace those debt and incur additional debt, create a recreation district with our surrounding township, similar to the library or fire districts, create naming rights, increase our membership fees, apply for grants, if any type of grants were available for, for any of these larger projects, partner with a wellness entity such as a hospital or a physical therapy place, or doing additional fundraising events like casino nights, spin-a-thons, swim-a-thons, raffles, and things like that. So I think during that community forum, there, there was a lot of very passionate people. They were, you know, they want to see the rec center thrive and to be around in 25 years. We've, we've already gone through two generations of Celineans so far, from 1991 until 2020, and we really need to, to think to, you know, make some good positive progress to continue this. Current status, I mentioned this, we have addressed a few of the items, such as painting, repairing dings on the walls, repairing doors and repainting doors. We've replaced a lot of the, kind of the worn-out equipment, like gym wipe dispensers. We have removed all of the lobby and cloth chairs throughout the facility. We're working with a local architect, this is pre-COVID, to design a new look for the lobby, sending out RFPs for remarcating the pools. The pool deck is scheduled to be replaced within this next year. We do have a new professional cleaning company that can address some of those comments and suggestions for additional cleaning. We do have this fiscal year budgeted to replace all of the cardio equipment, which is on a three-year rotation. And we also were able to purchase 17 fairly new spin bikes, a lot better than what we currently have from a locally-owned fitness club that went out of business. And we really took advantage, got a lot of bang for our buck on that one. And then we have a plan to sell our, our current Schwinn spin bikes and offset the cost to purchase additional bikes of the, the other type of spin bike. So we're trying to be creative and work within our means right now. And then I really think it's very important to establish, you know, some additional visioning sessions, you know, creating a group to work with. You know, visioning for the rec center is very important. We need to keep this in our forefront. Celine is experiencing growth. Celine, you know, expects a lot, and we want to provide for our community. What we're doing now, all of this planning and stuff, this isn't for us right now, but it is for our future. And, you know, Celine is a very unique community, and we're very unique to have a facility like this. And I think it's super important to, to keep it and to keep moving with our generations and meeting those needs. And with that, that's, that's where, where we are with our visioning sessions.
Very good, Director Scruggs. I appreciate that, that thorough overview. Excuse me, and I should have noted during my opening remarks to, to my colleagues and those who are, are watching or viewing us remotely, we're not going to come anywhere close to developing consensus this evening. This is simply an opportunity to share some data with you, the reflections of community members and rec center patrons, and begin to develop a vision for improving this facility and making it, making it more viable and attractive to residents of the greater Celine area, but also people who, who work and spend significant time in our community. So right now, my target is to revisit this sometime in September. As you'll recall, we do have a work meeting currently scheduled for our next meeting in two weeks to revisit the Sage Compensation Study. So again, my, my hope would be to revisit the future of the rec center at, at a work meeting in September. I will also note for the record, it's my understanding, from what I can see on the screen, that Mayor Pro Tem Girba has, is joining us. Is that correct? Are you there, Dean?
Yes, sir, I'm in the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome. What we're going to do at this time, Director Scruggs, unless you have anything further to add, is we're going to do a round of questions. We'll start with five minutes per council member. I'll start to my immediate left and begin with folks who are in council chambers with me, so I'll go in the following order. Delarco, Dylan, Mitchell, and then I'll jump to those who are participating in Zoom, which would be Girba, Kamara Sulek, and then end with Council Member CO. So we'll do a round of five-minute questions, and then we'll have ample time to address additional questions, concerns, and we'll, we'll go in that exact same order. So Director Scruggs, anything else that you would like to add at this time?
No, just ready for some questions.
Okay. And I would remind my colleagues at the dais, because of the Plexiglas, please be sure to speak loudly, clearly, and succinctly into the microphone. Councilmember Delarco, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carla, I apologize. I had a great deal of trouble hearing you. There's, seems to be for me an echo in the room, and I don't know if it's coming from your end or it's where I'm sitting, but I, I am aware I have a substantial amount of hearing loss from my lifestyle, but I'm going to pass on my questions to Ms. Dylan for the moment and, and try to piece together what's being said, and perhaps I'll have some more questions on the next round.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Delarco. We will have ample time to ask questions with you. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Dylan, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I don't want to pull my mic too close. Is it sufficient where it is?
Can you hear her, Carla?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want it to be too loud. Carla, thank you very much for your presentation. I guess I wanted to ask you, where do you stand as far as next steps? Are you going to develop a timeframe as to where you take this vision of, yes, we could expand, you know, that's an eight-year project, so that you can start working towards capital for that? I guess I want to know sort of what your next steps are.
You know, I, in thinking about this, I've had a lot of time to think about this, I think it would be wise to look at, you know, pick the projects that we feel are, are the priority projects, put a price tag on them, and then work with, and I think this is going to have to be a kind of a community-involved type of a project to, to get everyone, you know, some buy-in to this. You know, for example, if it is a splash pad, you know, put that price tag on there and then start working with groups regarding like capital campaigns, some donor ideas, you know, soliciting. Is it something that we could get our townships to buy in on? Because a lot of the township residents would benefit from this. And, you know, developing some type of cooperative agreements. And, but I, I think the, the next steps would be to identify those, you know, say, top five large, large items, you know, expansion items or whatnot, and figuring out how we can make that happen.
Okay. I appreciate that. Sort of the one thing that we didn't talk about as far as funding ideas is the county. I, I just, I really feel like we, as a city, need to put a little pressure on them and get some of those dollars back into our county, from the county, excuse me, into our facilities here. I think that would make some of these ideas a little more realistic as far as a realistic timeframe and the dollars needed for them. And then I guess I wanted to ask, you know, you've talked about low-hanging fruit. Are you sort of prioritizing those things right now of, you know, what can be done, at what cost?
It, I, maybe I wasn't super clear, but, you know, some of those things that were mentioned in, in the surveying, you know, regarding, you know, painting of the facility, updating the facility, we are, while we're closed, actually, we're doing quite a few of those things. And then also, there's other, we had, I started working on this with a, a local architect to design a kind of a, a new look for our lobby, making it a little bit more functional for what people are using it for now, which is, you know, sitting there and using the Wi-Fi and, and doing a little bit of work while they're waiting for their kids to finish up. You know, we, we have a large group of, of people from the schools that use it every single day of the school year, and creating different seating options, work option, you know, workstation options, some comfort level, but also kind of bringing a, kind of a lounge vibe to it. So I think that's, that's something that can be done very easily at very low cost. I do have a donor that has earmarked some money to, to contribute towards that. Plus, we also have some opportunities for some local foundation money and things like that. I think that can be pieced together fairly easily. And then, you know, other things, for example, that were mentioned, you know, updating fitness equipment. Well, we're at that third-year mark in our replacement program, so all of that, the cardio equipment upstairs will be, we do a buyback, a 25% buyback, and then we purchase all-new fitness equipment. And it makes a big difference when, when they see the new equipment come in, because after three years, running on those treadmills, we get a lot, a lot of miles on them, and they do start to wear out and fail and, and, you know, shiny and new is a lot nicer and makes people feel better, I guess.
Okay. I assume we're going to talk about the, the finance part as a separate piece to this? Are we talking like for, like the numbers part? Oh, you can't see me, I'm sorry. Like budgeting, like all over rec center, general budgeting? Are we going to discuss that as part of this meeting, like at a later point?
Yeah, let's do this, unless Director Scruggs objects. Let's do an initial round of questions specific to the rec center vision and the public engagement sessions that we had in 2019, 2020. When we do the second round of questions, if you have broader issues relating to the rec center or its finances, that'd be the appropriate time to break those off.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Carla. Is this okay? You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so happy to see that you've had these sessions, that you've had feedback from, from people who use your facility. How many people have memberships right now compared to the number of surveys that you got back, please?
Current membership is about 20, well, current membership is zero. We're not open.
At the survey, right?
Yeah, we're, we're at about 23, 24, 100 member, different memberships. It's not people, that's membership packages. And then we had 382 responses on the, on the survey, the online survey, and then additional people, probably about an additional 100 responses, either they directly emailed me, they came to the input sessions or whatnot.
Okay.
So about, say, 500.
Sure, sure. Okay. I appreciate that, because it gives an idea. I'm interested in the township partnering piece that you talked about. Have you done, is that an idea? Have you done any beginning work towards that project?
No, it's, it's just a concept idea.
Right. Are there facilities that use that model for funding, as far as you know?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
There's very few rec center, rec, municipally-owned rec centers throughout Michigan. Most of them are larger communities, so to have a model for a smaller community like this is, there's nothing out there. We, we are the, the trendsetter, basically.
Okay. All right. That helps with perspective. So then, I, I'm just interested, I'm interested in details about it, and different funding streams, whether that comes from the county or the township. At this point, are there any need-based opportunities for, for people who apply and ask for, for help?
For what? Regarding what?
For, so if somebody mentions to, at the Celine Area Social Services, you know, they, they need food stamps, they need extra groceries from the Celine Area Social Services, and they say, you know, my kids, and I've lost my job, I need to do, is, you know, can someone at that point say, hey, you can contact the city, because there might be some need-based funding for kids who are in need, who otherwise would not be able to participate in some of the activities?
So we do not have a, a need-based program. However, we have had, we've worked with the social services, Celine Social Services, to work with families that are in need, and, you know, say, for example, they need, or they, they would like to have their kid take a swim lesson. We've worked with them on that particularly. Also, our kids camp program, we've also worked with Celine Social Services on that. Essentially, they would provide the funding source for the, the family in need.
Okay.
There are some other members of the rec center that use, I think it's like through insurance companies that, that provide for their membership.
Oh.
I'm not sure why, but their, their insurance company pays for their membership.
Okay. All right. Those are all the questions I have for now. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Transitioning now to Mayor Pro Tem Girba. You have five minutes. You're muted, Dean.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to get it done. Thanks. Carla, not a lot of questions. I mean, I apologize, I wasn't able to hear all your presentation, but for my concern, I think I agree with your approach, is really identifying what would be our priorities for the rec center moving forward, what opportunities are there for funding. And as you know, I've been big push for the old Wilson Foundation, but because of our vocation and our affluence, we may not be able to qualify for that. But I support any kind of of approach like that. Again, for me, I think I wouldn't say that there's something that I really need to ask for you at this point in time. I believe that we're going to have to look forward in understanding exactly how the pandemic has affected your operations and how it will be going forward. And that'll be something that I think we need to go into more detail. It may not be at this point, but however you deal in addressing your budget concerns and so forth. And maybe that's later on when we talk about it. But at this point, I'm just going to pass on to whomever else is after me. Thank you.
Very good. Thank.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Girba. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, you have five minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got to ask, regarding the updating and expanding the facility, those are some big projects, obviously, that we need and want to plan for the future. And I think it's very prudent looking at 20, 25 years from now. Is there, are you looking at the financing sources? Are they going to, how heavily are they going to weigh on determining the projects as far as people that are willing to help with the funds? I mean, an outdoor pool would be, would be great, and/or a splash pad. The price tag on that is massive, and the maintenance, of course. But can you shed a little bit of light on, on that?
Well, I think it would be very important to have our funding source lined up prior to committing to doing a project. I think we've all learned our lesson from the very beginning. You know, we really need to know, have hard facts and hard figures on how much a project is going to cost, and have everything all lined up before we break ground at all. So I wouldn't suggest otherwise.
Are there funding sources that are, would want to provide funds for a specific project?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Are any of the funding sources for specific projects, like for a splash pad?
Right. So I would, I would say that if we were to develop like a capital campaign group that is, you know, either fundraising, seeking donations or whatnot, you know, you really, you focus on a specific project and a specific goal of money. And, you know, once, once a project is identified, you know, obviously, we would do a lot of homework to try to figure out what other types of funding is available, whether it's through the county, like matching type of grants, whether it's through private foundations, private, or other grant opportunities, the DNR, you know, other, other sources that might be available. We definitely dig, dig deep into, you know, trying to figure out other, other grant fundings.
Okay. I like the sound of need-based programs for families, for individuals in need. And I'm wondering about, is there any way, and I don't know if you said this, like physical therapy or occupational therapy being integrated or a service that can be offered and maybe help as far as funding and efficiency for an expansion and upgrade?
Right.
You know, either you go to, there's a couple somewhat local places, or, you know, you go to the ice cube. But I wonder if there's any opportunities there?
I think there is definite opportunity to start that discussion. There is some, some of the newer facilities that have been built by other municipalities. Again, we're kind of the leader. We're the trendsetter in having facilities like this. So they've had the opportunity to learn and to make things better. But, for example, Macomb Township, when they built their facility in, I think it was 2010, 2010, 2005, something like that, they worked with their local, I think it was not Beaumont, but maybe St. John's. They worked with them, and they built the facility with the intention of having a space available for them that they, they would rent from, from Macomb Township. So they integrated that into their facility. Dexter, Dexter Health and Wellness, when they built, what, three years ago, they did the same thing. They worked with a local physical therapy group and created that, that space specifically for them. There would be, there would not be an opportunity to do that here with our footprint that we have right now. We just don't have any space. The design of the facility is not conducive to having something like that. But if there were an expansion of the rec center, that, and we could, we could, you know, team up with someone, that would be a great opportunity to help get some funding for an expansion.
Right. And that's what, that's what I was thinking. And it seems like most of what's probably on the list is expanding the facility in one, in one way or another. So that's all that I have for this, for this round. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulek. Let me jump back to Councilmember Del Orco for a first rounds of question, a first round of questions. Mr. Councilmember Del Orco, the floor is yours for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Maro. Mayor Maro, I apologize. Carla, what is your sense on the utilization of the rec center before the pandemic hit? Do you feel like we have a solid performing participation in memberships before the pandemic hit?
I don't quite understand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, how about now? No?
Can you hear me now, Carla?
Yes.
Okay. My question was referring to the, before the pandemic hit, do you feel we have a solid performing occupancy? You can't hear me. And I can't hear you either. So the feeling is mutual.
Sorry about that, Carla. Just give us one second. And of course, Mr. Del Orco, make sure the light is illuminated at the base of that microphone.
Is that any better? Can you hear me now? Yep, it's illuminated. The green light is illuminated. Can you hear him, Carla?
Yes.
Okay, Carla, can you hear me? Okay. My question is relating to the, your sense of the occupancy of the rec center. Do you feel like we had solid participation with memberships before the pandemic hit?
I think what you asked was, what was the participation level? Or did we have a solid membership before the pandemic?
Yeah, that's, that's essentially what I'm trying to get at, is how do you feel like the community is using the space? Do you feel like it's being utilized well?
Yes. So currently, we are using every single area of the facility to, to the extreme. You know, we were creating fitness spaces that weren't designed to be fitness spaces. So for example, we have a kind of a classroom, we call it classroom on the second floor. That doubles as a yoga studio, Pilates studio, spin studio. You know, we're programming every single area, and we really have maximized the rec center. But, you know, deficiencies that we do have is, you know, now, in 1991, we didn't have personal trainers. Well, this is what, you know, personal training is a, is a big deal now. And we don't have a space specifically for that. So we've had to kind of create some spaces or move things around in order to, to have that. Or we're just working them into the weight room where every, you know, general member is, is using. You know, we don't have a lot of space for just stretching. You know, stretching has become, you know, more, more of a thing. It's not a trend, but it, you know, people want space where they can lay on the floor and stretch out. We just don't have that space. I mean, we never had that space. So, you know, what, what we're doing now is, you know, kind of meeting the trends, you know, kind of looking forward. I don't see personal training going away. I don't see the need for a stretching space or for some more intimate kind of yoga studios where they, they might have some, you know, lighting, you know, some variable lighting, maybe a little bit temperature, a better temperature control of that space. You know, we've done things, we've tried to, you know, make these spaces more usable, like we've, we've put in LED lighting, like rope lighting around the ceiling tiles, where you can remotely control them and turn, you know, turn the regular lights off and just use that LED lighting. And that works nice, but it's just, it's kind of retrofitted and, and, you know, make do. You know, and again, you know, we were made in 1991. You know, the building was, was created then. The thought process going into it, you know, it had no bearing on what we're actually doing today. There was no Zumba classes back then. There was no spin classes. So designing facilities for, for the trends is, is what we need to do.
So I apologize if you've answered this previously, but when you sent the survey out, was that something that was vetted out in the survey, was that people have the general feeling that they want space for this type of thing, and that we need to increase the footprint of the rec center?
Yes, that, that was one of the, the primary things that people were saying. You know, in expanding or creating more space, or the weight rooms are too small, there's no place for stretching. We want to walk indoors. You know, right now, our indoor walking is 1/16 of a mile, which is just around the gym. But meanwhile, we have basketball going at the same time. It's not like an elevated track similar to Washtenaw County, where you can walk, I think it's like a half mile, or not a half mile loop, it's like 1/8 of a mile loop around. You know, a lot of our older generation wants to walk inside in the wintertime. They wanted, they want to stay healthy, they want to stay moving, but walking outside really isn't an option.
Right, right.
It, definitely, those were a lot of the responses that we received during our surveying.
Just theoretically speaking, if we were to find funding sources or the ability to add on to the rec center, is there land there to do so, do so, or would it require going up in levels?
I think the question was, is there a way to expand out versus up?
Yes. Is there enough land?
There would be, yes. There would be some, some earth moving and whatnot, but definitely, I think there is some, some additional space available.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Del Orco. I, my apologies, I skipped over Councilmember Seo. Jack, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Very good. You have five minutes. Questions for Director Scruggs.
Okay. Carla, I very much agree with what you're talking about, needing to expand indoor space. As an in-and-out user over the many years the rec center's been there and that I've lived in Celine, I just started to use the space again before the COVID-19 things struck, with one of your private fitness instructors. And although we may do, like you say, you know, there are times when people walked around the corner and almost stepped on me while I was on the floor stretching, or, you know, there were times when we waited in line to use some of the weight equipment we saw. So I understand exactly what you're saying about the need for increased space for different programs. The one thing that always kind of strikes me is that so many people want an outdoor splash pad or an outdoor pool. And is there any feeling among you folks in the business about whether or not that's money well spent? I know when I was young, we belonged to an outdoor swim club, and it was open generally from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Maybe we got two weeks on either side of that. So that would have made it, at most, a four-month activity. Although we used it hard when it was there, and we really enjoyed it, there were just times, because it was outdoors, that couldn't be used. Is it really worth the expense to have an outdoor facility? You know, what's the, what's the common thinking among people in the rec business?
Amongst my community colleagues that do have facilities, you pray for a really good hot summer. This summer would have been ideal to have an outdoor pool. Some summers, like last summer, we had a lot of rain. It rained just about every Wednesday and Tuesday, or Thursday. And I know that because we had to cancel softball quite a bit. But they are a great expense, and unless you have dedicated millage dollars to operate them, they, they won't, they won't pay for the debt and pay for the operations. You know, the, the invention of the splash pad was genius. It creates an outdoor water feature play area. It's not swimming, but it's, it meets the need of, you know, getting wet, cooling down, having some shade areas for lounging with concessions or whatnot. You don't need to have lifeguards for an outdoor splash pad, so your operational costs are very limited. There's ways to, to use the, the water, kind of recirculate that water and reuse it, reuse it for irrigation. So the, in my opinion, a splash pad would be more ideal, more used, and a better use of funding than an outdoor pool at this time. I don't want, there's a lot of people out there that would love to have an outdoor pool. That's all I've heard for, you know, 30 years now. But I, I mean, unless we have some unlimited sources of funding, it, I just don't think it would be possible.
Okay. Thank you, Carla. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seo. I'll rotate back now to Councilwoman Dylan and Carla. I'm going to permit, at this time, broader questions about the operations of the rec center or Parks and Rec more generally. So folks can continue to, to stick with the rec center visioning sessions and our, the suggestions we receive from community members and patrons about how to improve the facility. But conversely, if you have thoughts about the rec center's budget, finances, operations, or Parks and Rec more broadly, feel free to ask them at this time. Again, please be sure to speak directly into the microphone. If you're participating in council chambers, make sure that green light is illuminated, and speak slowly, loudly, and succinctly. Councilwoman Dylan, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Carla, I just wanted to first start with, you previously mentioned that Celine's kind of unique in having a rec center. What's your reply to the question of why shouldn't the rec center be privatized?
Why shouldn't it be privatized? Well, I guess as long as we're talking about visioning, you know, it was the vision of our mayor and city council and back in, what, 1985, '86, to have a facility here in Celine for our community to use. And they made it happen, you know, through private donations, through public donations, through our, our industry, dedicating a certain amount of money each year to, to help pay for a facility. I think you would lose a little bit of the, the local feel, the community feel, if it, if it were to be privatized. Not sure exactly what you mean, or if you had kind of a, something in mind for a private facility. Like, are you talking like a lifetime fitness or something like that?
You know, I'm not trying to be confrontational. I'm just saying, this has been a topic that's come up, and I just want to sort of re- and I just want to sort of reopen that dialogue of, you know, you know, we've always said this is, you know, a community asset. And there's a lot of discussion about the fact that, you know, that city residents, you know, are paying for this, but yet they only receive the same benefit as non-city people as far as membership. Do, do you understand what I'm saying? That there tends to be a discussion? I apologize. I'm sorry.
I'm hurting.
We're losing Carla, Chris.
Yep.
She's frozen. Can you, are you there, Carla?
Yes.
Okay, you had, you had unstable internet for a moment there.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's all right. Did you?
I'm the only one here in the.
Yeah. Did you catch Councilwoman Dylan's question?
Yeah, and I, my question back was, was the question in the talk about privatizing, privatizing the rec center? Or was it about, uh, resident benefits?
There was both pieces to it. I had sort of segued off. So there was privatizing, you know, that was, that was the initial question of, you know, what do we say in reply to those individuals that say, why doesn't the city just privatize this?
So I guess, not to be confrontational, but who would, who would, who would be a private entity that would own this?
You know, I'm just, okay, I guess maybe privatizing, you know, like Dexter Health and Wellness, such things like that, or a county facility where it's not a city asset.
Right. So, again, you know, we're, we're kind of a leader in having a, a recreation center in our very small community. Dexter did not build a health and wellness center. That is not owned by the community. That is owned by Power Wellness. They chose to build that facility in Dexter because they felt that that was a, it's kind of like buying a McDonald's. You know, you, you figure out where, where you should have one. So that, it, it wasn't like Dexter built a, a facility and said, hey, let's privatize this. The county, you know, they have their own rec center. Actually, back in the day, we've had some discussions with them about, you know, would they be interested in, in, owning the, the Celine rec center? And at that time, maybe it's changed, I don't know. But, uh, at that time, they, they already have their own rec center. They had no intention of, of having additional rec centers. So I, I don't know. I don't have a, I guess, an answer about privatization, other than, uh, our mayor and city council, a long time ago, wanted to have a rec center, so they made it happen. So this is where we're at right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. Going into sort of your budget, you know, I know that it's been a very difficult year for you. COVID really hit the rec center very hard, um, and continues to. What exactly are you going to do to move forward from that at this point? To, it, it's great that we're visioning, but we've got to kind of get back to, to norm as we continue to grow. You know, so we've got to kind of figure out how we're going to do that. And I know that you've been very creative in the ways in which you do things. And so I guess I was just looking to you as to, are you going to be looking for more support from the city? To keep moving forward? Are you going to, um, you know, start some of these fundraising ideas? To kind of keep the flow going and then build from there? I, I guess I'm just trying to ask what your plan is.
Well, fortunately, um, or unfortunately, uh, we, we still don't know when we can reopen this facility. We have already started, um, you know, our kids camp is in full swing. We're more than halfway through our summer program. I think there may be some opportunity, um, once the schools figure out what they're doing, to expand and, and extend our kids camp program. We are doing our outdoor fitness. We're doing virtual fitness. Uh, our, our park rentals have, have begun and we are, are taking in quite a bit of money for that, along with field rentals and, and our sand volleyball courts. We've been renting those out to, uh, HVBC. Swim lessons, actually last Wednesday, uh, we were alerted by our county that, uh, during the governor's last executive order, we were allowed to, um, have in-person, uh, swim lessons again. So we actually started those today. Things are going very well. We, in one day, we had, uh, all of our slots filled up. And, um, we're going to keep, keep expanding that and doing as much as we can, uh, to continue to bring in revenue for that. In addition, our, our tennis lessons are going very well. Those are filled up and, and we're adding additional, uh, classes. Soccer leagues, softball leagues, sand volleyball leagues are all going. So we're doing as much as possible as, as, as we're allowed right now. And then we're also, you know, my staff and I, we've been, um, you know, in order to, you know, once we get the green light to open, we've got to be ready. And that includes programs. So all of our fall events, we've been working on those. They're going to be completely different than in years past. So for example, um, our Halloween event, which we typically would have in our gym, with about three or 400 people, we're going to be expanding that into our parks, where it's a, a very clever Halloween park event. Our typical, you know, like, around the holidays where we have PJs and stories of Santa, we're going to have an outdoor event with, with some other really fun and unique, uh, programs. So we're, we're still planning. We're still, you know, we will reopen at some point. So we, it's, it's a lot of work to keep things moving and, 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 uh, doing what we're doing right now. I wish I had a date, date certain for reopening. But I don't unfortunately. And, uh, what, over the weekend, I did email out to you our, our, uh, pre-audit, uh, year-end, um, financials. And, um, we ended up, you know, pre-COVID, we were, we were doing very well. We were on a strong, uh, upward trend in our memberships and programming and things like that. Where we ended up, again, this is pre-audit, um, our revenues versus expenses, we ended up dipping into our, uh, fund balance of 728,000. We dipped in about 243,000. So, um, we still have a, a fairly healthy fund balance of 526,000, uh, going into this fiscal year. So I, I think it's really important to be ready and, and reopen and keep adding things as, as we can.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate your, your creativity in, in finding, uh, new methods and, for programming. Thank you.
You have to move on. Yep, I bet there'll be another round of questioning though, Councilwoman Dylan. So if you have additional thoughts, hang on to those. Um, Councilwoman Mitchell, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Carla, it's so helpful for me to hear other people's questions and, and I, I appreciate the questions that are being asked. I appreciate your preparation and, and your knowledge base. Do you, one of the things I'd like to know at some point is, what is the average city household in Celine? What is their yearly tax burden that would go towards the rec center? It's not a number we can have now, but at some point, I would like to have that information. So, so from your membership, it looks like about 25% of the city residents use the facility. We know that not all of those are the city of Celine. And I, I just think about sometimes, it's no question that it's a wonderful thing to have a rec center. And I'm trying to figure out how to make it more equitable so that people who are paying and, and have the burden of paying also can enjoy the benefits of it. I think as a community, just having the rec center there offers tremendous opportunities for a healthier community. But I'd like to see some dollars, um, just so that I can reconcile some questions within, that I have about what does the average household pay per year? And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Carla, because I think it's come up twice now. For the benefit of, of some of our newer council members and those that are, are viewing online via Zoom or Facebook, do you want to talk a little bit and maybe Mr. Girba, Mayor Potem Girba and I can elaborate since we served on the task force as well. But I want to take you back to 2013 when we commissioned, early in my tenure as mayor, a rec center sustainability task force, which made a number of recommendations. And out of that group came the recommendation to, uh, adjust membership fees and offer a discount to the entire Celine community defined as the school district. And while on the surface that seemed counterintuitive, it actually was, uh, resulted in a significant financial benefit and windfall to the, the rec center. Do you want to elaborate on that? Maybe talk a little bit about what other changes went into effect subsequent to that group making recommendations to council? And I think those changes went into effect in, uh, I think January or certainly the first quarter 2014.
Yes, you are correct. Um, so prior to, uh, January 2014, we have always had a, a big rift. You know, for example, directly across the street at Silver Maples, which is, uh, Lodi Township, they were paying non-resident fees. And they were, they were the closest resident, or the closest neighborhood to the rec center. They were closer than the, the city of Celine residents. And, you know, we out, we didn't get a lot of people joining because there was a lot of, um, they were, they were troubled because they weren't given, they weren't considered residents. We had to do a lot of education. You know, someone coming up to the front counter, they want to buy a family membership and we told them, you know, because where they live, they were non-residents. And their argument was, we pay Celine taxes. They pay Celine, you know, library taxes. They, they, you know, they, they have a Celine mailing address. They go to Celine's schools. But they weren't, because the, the rec center said they're not residents. They, they just wouldn't join. And, um, that was a, a big thing for, for a lot of, a lot of people. And, uh, part of the task force, one of the things that they did address was just that. Uh, the, the greater Celine community, um, you know, they do go to Celine schools. They are serviced by the Celine Fire Department. They, they do go to the Celine District Library. And why is the rec center different? And part of the task force was comprised of our city council, uh, the mayor, of course, uh, some Celine School Board members, um, and some private, uh, community members. Some from the banking community, some from our industry. And, um, that was, that was one of the biggest things besides, um, including our fitness classes with the membership price. So we, we, uh, we visited how, how we could integrate, uh, a majority of our fitness classes into the membership, um, uh, pricing. And we evaluated that financially. And, um, making that change, expanding our hours of operation, uh, increasing our membership fees and including, uh, the, the Celine School District as residents, uh, made a, a huge impact. January, uh, January 2014, we rolled, rolled out all of this. And immediately, we had people that had not had memberships before because they were considered non-residents joining. The word got around and, and we bumped our membership up by, I, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but at least 400. And it, it made a, a significant impact on, on the rec center. Part of the, uh, task force job, you know, our, our mission was to, how can we make the rec center more sustainable? Well, since 2014, we, you know, we never had a fund balance. And now we're up to, you know, 728,000 before COVID hit. And, you know, that, it, the rec task force did exactly what, what it was supposed to, to do. And I think, uh, having, having that change was, was, uh, one of the major, major players in that. Did I cover all the, the rec task force things?
Yeah, well, I think the only thing that you left out was, uh, another big change, which I think was well received by patrons in the community, was including most of the classes, with the exception of the water aerobics classes, as part of your membership. So instead of paying an additional fee, uh, we adjusted the, actually it was a modest increase to memberships, both individuals, families and, uh, couples, and included those, uh, those, those classes with memberships. So that was, that was, again, well received and appreciated by, by patrons and the broader community. Uh, Councilmember Girba, Mayor Potem Girba, uh, you have five minutes. Anything you would like to add or any questions that you have?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carla, the only kind of questions I have regarding your finances moving forward is, the one thing that I know we've been doing is delaying or deferring the membership dues, which unfortunately, I think, will impact what happens into the future. Being the, the idea that we're extending their memberships because they weren't able to use them. So that will impact your revenue likely in the next year or whatever, depending on when you can actually reopen. What I would like to see as possible is a projection of what you believe that could be, because I think that would be the bridging funding that we're looking at in terms of supporting your operations if, if there needs to be some kind of offset. And we can talk about that more offside, but I believe that's one of the things that, um, would be a concern because the fact that we get you up and running again doesn't mean that we're going to have, have all these brand-new memberships, which would allow the revenue to offset your activities. But for that, that's only my issue, I'm just kind of understanding that. And I know you and Joanna, I think you all will figure that out. As you discussed the issue of, of, when we did the reassessment, reassessment of everything and bringing more money in, um, from the way that we handle the memberships and so forth, I think we have to remember that part of the concern was that we also received a lot of funding from the Cares Village, which doesn't necessarily just cover the city, but it covers the entire school district. And that was some of the other funding that was helping to offset some of the operations in terms of, you know, long-term costs that we received to offset some of the loans and things. So that was balanced against bringing in the, um, township at the same rate of membership, if you recall. And I think that helped assist with that justification when we did it. In terms of actual overall contribution from the general fund, which would be the taxpayer contribution to the rec center, I believe it's approximately $150,000 a year, which modified was $25,000 for operations and the other $125,000 was being used to offset the long-term cost of the renovation of the building. And when we did that in terms of the, the new framing, the new roof and all of that. So when you look at that, that, I believe, is the cost of contribution from the taxpayers. It isn't a significant amount, but it may increase because of COVID. And, uh, we would look at that as being a, uh, bridging thing that would be a one-time cost. I'm just making these statements because I believe that from what we've talked in the past and my discussions with the former city manager, yourself, and looking at the finances, that's where we will have our concern moving forward. For you, right now, in understanding, just from my perspective, your staff are at a minimum, correct? You basically have laid off everyone, or they're being brought back on based on your actual need, correct?
That's correct. Um, March 13th, uh, we laid, or March 14th, um, that, that next week, we laid off all part-time staff, all staff, uh, with the exception of our full-time, so there's six people. And we did keep two, um, part-time staff on. One doing social media things and the other one is our, uh, like, membership clerk and does all of our, uh, payroll, um, all of the refunds and, and money handling things. So we did bring back our, uh, kids camp staff. I think there's about 13. And three rec on the go staff, and that was, uh, mid-June. And they've been working those programs. And then, uh, just recently, um, on, uh, or today, we brought back, uh, six, um, lifeguards, six or eight lifeguards and, uh, six swim instructors.
And those costs are all associated with fees, correct? Most of those staffs? Most of those staffs?
Correct.
If we don't give the course, we don't get the revenue, basically?
Correct.
So it's an offset?
Correct.
Thank you. From my concern, just in terms of the financials, is as I mentioned, I think it's understanding what we need to do in terms of bridging, whether or not that's needed. At this point, you do have a fund balance. There are some long-term costs and things that we are paying over, over time and just adjusting that. But I think at this point, the idea of privatizing or whatever, one of the benefits is that for what we provide is a significant benefit for everyone that's around here. Should we raise our fees slightly to be a little more, you know, cost-conscious? I think we could probably do that and still be all right. And that may help to reduce, reduce some more of that funding coming in from the city. But at this point, I think really is trying to understand what's going to happen. The whole world's going to be changing. Privatization, at this point, I don't see anybody doing that. There would be a private facility if it meant making a lot of money. And the only private facility we have is Powerhouse Gym and a couple individual, really small type training centers. Something with our ability to have a swimming pool, you will not see that anywhere in the area unless there's going to be something built in Ann Arbor, which has a huge swimming competition type situation or whatever. So from my perspective, right now, it is an asset. If it becomes more of a drain on the city, then we have to look at that and deal with it. But I believe as Ms. Scruggs has mentioned, there's a couple of things that we can do in contributing to the facility that would help address some of the shortfalls and the splash, splash pad being one of it, if we can get some funding for that and whatever else. So that's really all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Can I comment a little?
Yes, please. Feel free to comment, Director Scruggs.
You know, one thing that I failed to mention is, you know, the rec center is not just a gym or a fitness facility or whatnot, but we are the Parks and Recreation Department for the city of Celine. You know, we're offering tennis lessons, we're offering leagues, our community events, our movies in the park, rec on the go. I mean, we're based out of here. These are our offices here at the rec center, but it's not, it doesn't define what we do. You have to remember, you know, we're operating programs in the parks. We're doing all sorts of different things, not just operating a gym.
Actually, Carla, that's very helpful because I think that is a key that we're supporting all of those other functions that are not just the rec center. And I don't think we really centered on that as much as we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Scruggs and Councilmember Girba, Mayor Portem Girba, excuse me. Councilmember Camaro Sulek, you have five minutes.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. That was very good information, Ms. Scruggs, because you're right, there is efficiencies by having the rec department being in the rec center. And we can't lose sight of that. Very important. We have a robust rec options here in Celine. I mean, I do wonder, and Dean stole some of my thunder with the extending the memberships and the impact that that's going to have when people feel more, when it can be, when the center can be opened up to all members, there'll be that lag. And then also the comfort level that people will feel of like new members coming in. I think a splash pad, obviously being outside and being seasonal, would be, you know, would be good. I wonder if having an outdoor ice rink during the winter, if it stays cold enough, would be better there than at Henny Field, but at any rate, that's a side issue. What is, what are your thoughts on, and I don't want to say come out of, come out of COVID, but say six, nine, 12 months from now? I know you don't have a crystal ball, but we can only do, take one step at a time and try to entice people to come back and feel, and feel comfortable. But do you have any, any gauge on how people are feeling right now? Like if the rec center were to open up and be operable? Any sense on how many people would actually come and use the facilities?
Let's just say, I think we would have to limit how many people come into the, into the facility at a time. I've had, I've had a lot of discussions, I've had a lot of emails and I see some comments here and there when, you know, we announced that we were having a swimming lesson starting. People, our phones were ringing off the hook. People wanted to sign their kids up. I had some of our Aqua Fitness participants not very happy with us. And we had to, we sent them a direct email saying, hey, listen, we're really sorry, we can't open the pool so that you can have your classes again. You know, you're going to see something on social media saying that we're having swim lessons, but we can't have this yet. People are ready to come back, you know, whether it's weightlifting, whether it's, you know, getting back into their class, whether it's just using the treadmill that they're used to. I have a feeling that we're going to be able to come back fairly quickly. We want to do it in a safe method, obviously. Our reactivation plan for our kids camp is very extensive, you know, trying to keep our counselors and our kids safe. The reactivation plan that we put together in two days for our swimming lessons, I think it's, it's a very good plan. You know, we have people coming in through our pool area, just off the pool deck, rather than coming through the front door. We get one way in, these are the rules, this is how you do it. Once your class is over, you're going to be exiting out a different door.
Right.
So we have safety in mind for everything. We've already spaced out all of our equipment that we could move. Some of the Nautilus equipment is, it's just so heavy, we can't move that. So we're going to have to have those like every other piece kind of alternating days. But all of our cardio equipment, we moved all around the facility. Our free weight equipment, we've moved and staged so that they're all socially distanced. We're using just about every part of the facility. So our number one priority is to be safe, but we do want people back in this building.
Yeah. Well, I think you're doing a wonderful job. I have to say that it's nice to hear the kids camp going on at Pleasant Ridge. You know, miss those, those kids screaming and having, and having fun. So I'm glad you're able to do as much as you can and navigate this difficult time. So thank you for all your work on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Camaro Sulek. Councilmember Del Orco, any additional questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carla, when we, when we think about the, the impact of COVID, how far away from status quo are we with some of these reactivation plans you've put in place where we now have a lot of the classes back up and running again and we're functioning to some extent, but we don't have our, our members back in the facility using the, the equipment? Are we, are we at 30%, 40%? Do you have a sense of where we are as far as the status quo?
So are you, are you asking for participation levels?
I'm just wondering where we are as far as maintaining the functionality of the rec center in spite of what's happening?
So we've had to redesign how we do, how we offer kids camp, how we offer our swim lessons. You know, we're not, we're not using our main entrance. For example, for our kids camp, we've created a drop-off and a pickup area on the north side of the building where, in fact, we're probably going to continue this next summer and forever because it really works out well. The parents don't get out of their car, they don't, they don't park in our front loop and walk in and, you know, create additional bodies in the facility. They, we have a drop-off, they come straight into the gym, they have hooks in the gym where they hang their bags. We have smaller groups. We've, we've separated like lunches rather than one group lunch. We have three different lunches with smaller groups. We clean our park benches in between the lunches. Activities are completely different. We try to keep our older group separated from our younger kids, which isn't necessarily great, but it seems to be working very well. So yeah, I mean, we, we had to really think outside the box to figure out how we're going to create safe environments for our kids camp program. We did the same thing with our swim lesson program and even for like our soccer leagues. We have new rules designed specifically for those activities. You know, we're trying to encourage people to stay as socially distanced as possible, wear masks as much as possible, now even in our outdoor activities. I, you know, I'm here when our soccer league comes, everyone comes with a mask on, they're bringing their water bottles, they're, you know, they're spacing out. Some people will take their mask off once they're running and in their activities, but if they're on the sidelines, they're putting their mask back on. So I think everyone is, is complying with, with, you know, just trying to be as safe as possible.
Yeah, I'm really glad to see that there's been some creative strategies employed to keep things moving forward in spite of everything that's happening. That's really outstanding. As far as the, the loss of revenue from memberships, all the memberships are on, on pause right now, all of them, correct?
That's correct. We have a membership freeze, we, all of our recurring billing, they have not been charged at all. Normally it's like the 15th of the month, so we were actually able to stop it prior to March 15th. And then all of our members who pay in advance, they're on freeze. We've had just a handful of people ask for refunds and I'm talking probably less than 12.
Okay. That, that shows the community is vested in keeping the rec center going as well, and that's a good sign. So when we think about what you had to dip into from the, the fund balance, the 243,000, that combined with the layoffs is, is what was necessary to keep operations moving forward throughout the last three, three and a half months?
Correct.
Okay. So that would seem to suggest that we, we need to be able to return to some semblance of normalcy or open in some capacity, or you're going to have to, to continue to dip into the, the fund balance to keep things going?
Well, we're starting to generate some revenue as the governor kind of opens things up. So for example, you know, our swim lessons is a new revenue stream that we can just now start, start moving with. You know, our park rentals have, over the past month, have increased significantly. And also we're expanding our tennis lessons. Normally we would end by the middle, middle of August, but we're going to continue those into September and possibly even October, whatever. We just have to take advantages of as much outdoor activities and programming as possible until it gets too cold.
Okay, understood. Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Scruggs.
Thank you, Councilmember Camaro Sulek. Mr. CEO or Councilmember CEO, we're going to end with you. Any additional comments or questions this evening for Parks and Rec Director Scruggs?
Yes, just very briefly, I think what's going on with the rec center, the fact that Carla has a fund balance there has allowed us to absorb some of the impact of this COVID-19 shutdown and slowdown. I guess it just points to the need for us to always be careful about how we manage our finances and our affairs so that when these things happen, we can continue to survive into the future without having to face the reality of completely closing the doors and shuttering the business because we didn't have enough wherewithal to maintain while the unfortunate situation is going on. So I think it's a good thing, Carla. We thank you for your efforts and thank you for your efforts to continue to provide programming, even with the limited access that we have. And I applaud your inventiveness and your flexibility in moving things along. So very good job. Thank you very much.
Just a quick, I would be remiss if I did not credit my staff. They really are very creative. They really rose to the occasion during this time and have created some pretty fantastic new ideas and really have worked outside that, that box. And I mean, without them, we, we're not doing anything. So please, I would like to acknowledge my staff.
Thank them for me also.
Very good. Thank you, Director Scruggs. We are just about out of time. Carla, I will get with you in the coming days and we can identify a time to revisit this issue with city council, likely at a work meeting in September. I know there were some data points that were asked for by various council members, so I'll assume that you'll get those to us and maybe have the interim city manager disseminate those through his weekly communique. And of course, in the interim, if council members do have comments or questions or would like to discuss any of these issues with Director Scruggs, please contact her directly. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn our work meeting at 6:58 PM.
Move by the elected vice CEO to adjourn at 6:58 PM. All who consent, please, by the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Be in into regular session in two minutes.
Taxes, and I want to support my downtown like my fellow neighbors have said, but I'm torn because of the promises that have been broken. So I do look forward to you as members to make a swift and appropriate decision to connect our dedicated community members to our beloved downtown. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate your comments. There are additional citizen comments from the audience, please.
Sir. Hello, I am Gillian Hayes. I just turned 12 on May 30th. I moved to Celine about two years ago. Every season, I hope to see construction for the sidewalk. I would like to use it to bike, to see my friends, and bike around town. I like to go to the library that I love and to the farmer's market. I would be able to see them more if I could ride my bike to their house. My mom won't let me because of the dangerous curve. In my first year at Celine Middle School, I started a club, Planet Earth Club. Every week, we would look up ways to save the city a little bit, piece at a time. My old principal supported this idea and kept giving us ways to think bigger. One idea would be me riding to school from time to time. I would really love a sidewalk from my neighborhood in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Very nicely done. Any additional citizen comments from the audience this evening? Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dietz Lafour. I live at 814 Newcastle in Phase 1 of Huntington Woods. I just really wanted to echo the sentiments of my fellow neighbors. There's really two issues. The money that has already been obligated by Mr. Shipman that remains there and available for this, and we're here to try to appeal to you to bridge that gap and make this sort of dream a reality. We have a very active subdivision, particularly with the kids. There's a high ratio of kids to adults, and nearly 100% of those kids are out every day. Certainly now in this climate where we're looking at creative ways to keep our kids active, you don't have to look very far in Huntington Woods because the level of innovation and creativity is self-evident. What we really need is to expand those borders for certainly the two that are here and all the remainders, the remaining kids at home. We really need that more now than ever, and I'm really asking for, to echo the sentiments of my neighbors here in the comments that you've received, to really strongly consider to get this project moving forward, if not this season, early next spring, because now more than ever, we really need it, more for the kids than any of the adults. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Any additional citizen comments from those in the audience? Then Clerk Royal, I'm going to turn it over to you. If you want to begin by reading, I think we received at least three or four emails in advance of tonight's meeting on agenda items.
I have quite a few, Mayor.
Okay, please. If you want to state the individual's name and address and then read their comments for the record, that would be great.
Okay, the first one is on Zoom chat. It was from Mr. Bernard Miller. He stated, "As you may know, my father, Councilman Terry Lewis Miller, was instrumental in founding of the Regional Recreation Center. Millerfield was named in his honor. Can you give me an update on the Eagle Scout project that was recently presented and if more money is required? If so, can you please provide contact data for funding? So how much money would be required to obtain the name right of this Eagle Scouts project in memory of my father?" The next one I have is from Mary Hess. And she states, "Mr. Farrell signed a sales agreement with Section 4."
Oh, actually, Terry, Terry, excuse me. That comment will need to be reserved towards the end of the meeting because that's not enumerated action item or discussion item.
I've got them all together. I apologize.
No, it's all right.
The next one is from Stephanie Ray. She is a resident of Huntington Woods, Phase 2. We would like to express our concern to hearing the latest news that the sidewalk project that would connect our subdivision to Michigan Avenue in the greater Celine community once again been delayed, this time because of additional costs projected by the Washenaw County Road Commission. William and our then-nine-year-old son Gabriel also made comments before the full council in October of 2019 about our family's desire to see this project come to fruition. We know from longtime residents of the neighborhood that this is a project that has been promised in one fashion or another for many years now, and has long been hoped for by seemingly every neighbor with whom we have ever spoken to on the issue. We very much hope that a solution can be found so that the city's, as whole city tax-paying residents of Celine, we can safely leave the neighborhood, not just by car, but also by foot and bike." Our next one is from Jessica LaPorte. Please accept these comments for tonight's meeting. 5.5 million, that's the approximate amount of money the city has collected in taxes just from Phase 1 of the Huntington Woods subdivision since it was annexed into the city. And yet, in almost 15 years of this annexation, and even before, a promise to connect the sub to the city, its funds has never been fulfilled. Excuse after excuse has been logged at the residence, not from the city per se, but from the developer, the road commission, the engineering company, the contractor. While the city is at fault for these delays, the city's failure to make itself a party to these transactions has left it unable to do anything more than hem and haw and give apologies, but apologies are no longer enough. With more than double the amount of houses of the original phase, all paying city taxes, and dozens more children who want to make the walk to the city, it is time for the city to put its money where its mouth is and help make this promise a reality. We recognize these times are difficult financially, but if this project had been completed when it should have been two, three, or even 10 years ago, we wouldn't have been here, we wouldn't have to be here. No more excuses, we want action. Thank you. The next one is from Kate Hartless. Says, "Good evening, I would like to address the council about my concerns regarding a connecting sidewalk from Huntington Woods subdivision to the rest of the city. I moved to Celine almost two years ago when we began the construction of our house. We were very excited when we were told that the city had committed to connecting the neighborhood to the rest of the city with a sidewalk. There are so many parks and small businesses that we would love to be able to walk to or ride to. While we live close to town, Macon Monroe is too dangerous for pedestrians without a sidewalk. There is a limited visibility around the curve where the speed limit transitions to 45 miles per hour. Throughout the entire time that I have lived in Huntington Woods, we have been told that the sidewalk project is happening, but it is one obstacle after another. Last year, the mayor promised to move heaven and earth to see this project through. Instead, the lack of transparency and what seems like a lack of understanding of the process involved in building a sidewalk has led to broken commitments. Last year, I emailed the council, mayor, and city planner about my concerns regarding the delay and the ever-changing story from officials. After learning that Phase 1, that my Phase 1 neighbors have been hearing the same stories since the early 2000s, it's not, it is hard not to feel like we are being lied to. We pay quite a lot in property taxes. Currently, we do not receive snow removal services or even street lights in Phase 2 of our neighborhood, which is a separate issue. It feels like we are overlooked citizens to the city who is happy to take our taxes but slow to nonexistent and delivering our basic promises. A connecting sidewalk would go a long way in connecting us to the rest of the city, but literally and figuratively. It would allow us to frequent small businesses more often in support of the local economy." The next one is from Diane Cooper. "My name is Diane Cooper, and I live at 515 Huntington Drive in Celine. I support building the sidewalk from the Huntington Woods subdivision to downtown Celine. We would like to walk downtown and support our local businesses. However, the walk to the downtown area is dangerous. As we are all aware, drivers do not adhere to the speed limits around the line curve, and walking on the grass is treacherous due to the drainage tubes and uneven terrain. While I would like to be optimistic about the sidewalk, I am concerned that a lack of accountability, organization, and project management could derail the entire project. I understand that another major issue was discovered in December 2019, and that the issue is delaying the project yet again. It seems odd that every time we hear that the project is ready to move forward, and an issue arises that causes significant delays. Is there a project manager assigned to it? Has a full assessment of potential issues been completed? Is there a comprehensive list of the issues that are causing delays, including a proposed solution and timelines for these solutions, and the city can provide to Huntington Woods residents? With respect to accountability, one of the major issues seems to be that the city has no authority among the current stakeholders to move the project forward. It would be helpful if the city council could discuss where it stands with respect to whether it will agree to take over the responsibility for completing the sidewalk. As a resident of Huntington Woods, I hope the city council values us as resident, city residents and taxpayers, and recognizes the importance of this project. On behalf of my household, I ask that the city council vote to support residents of Huntington Woods by assuming the responsibility for building the sidewalk." Next, we have Daniel Green. "When my wife and I were looking for a new home, the Huntington Woods neighborhood really appealed to us for a number of reasons, including the proximity to downtown and the idea that we'd eventually be able to access downtown by walking or biking, with the help of the promised sidewalks. As a person who runs through this section of Monroe where the sidewalk will go, I strongly feel this is currently not safe for my family to use, and I feel unsafe myself given the blind turn heading into town, as well as various weather conditions that can make the footing unstable. For us to access downtown as a family, we need to get in the car and drive, which was not an issue when we lived in Highland or East Lanning. And this is very much makes us feel like the township residents who are paying city taxes. Given the tax base that our neighborhood provides, it would be a disservice to the residents of Huntington Woods to ignore this issue. I'd like to urge the city council and Mayor Harrow to find a way to make the sidewalk happen." The next one is from, hmm, Sean, is, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that. "As a taxpaying resident of the city of Celine, it is my hope and desire that this council will have a resolution that allows for the city to take over the project to build and connect a sidewalk from the Huntington Woods subdivision with the downtown community. My family and I enjoy walking and/or riding our bikes to downtown area where we support our local business community. While I do my best to protect my family, it is dangerous with oncoming traffic as you heard, as you've had around the bend on Monroe Street by the river, forcing you to have to go out into the road with no sidewalk. I would fully support a resolution in which the city would take over the construction of the sidewalk." Daniel Green. Oh, wait a minute.
I believe you already read his comments.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Chris Wright. "I am reaching out as a part of any resolution that would lead to the completion of the sidewalk project connecting the Huntington Woods subdivision and downtown Celine. My wife and I recently moved in the Huntington Woods, Phase 2, with our two young children. During the process, we were informed multiple times that there would be a sidewalk connecting our neighborhood scene. We chose Celine in large part because of its inviting small-town feel. We love the area and look forward to participating in many activities offered to bring the community together. As you know, the Huntington Woods community is continuing to expand, and I'm sure provides plenty in our taxes to help support our connection to the rest of the downtown community. It is unreasonable to leave such an attractive, bright neighborhood with many young families with no safe means of traveling the short distance into town. I realize that there may be many obstacles that are beyond my knowledge, but I'm confident the city would do the right thing in regards to this situation." Jason Najee. "I will keep this short. I made a choice to build and move to this Huntington Woods neighborhood recently. It's a beautiful and disconnected and a tough-to-beach neighborhood. Our residents deserve the ability to safely get to and from the city. Anything short of an installation of a walkway is a failure. We need the city's involvement in getting this completed. Thank you for your time, and I'll be in touch." Kevin Meyer, Marne. "We live in Huntington Woods, Phase 2, and we would really like the city to take over the sidewalk project so we can have a safe way to access the downtown area with our family. We feel this is a very important issue. We know the issue, we know the plans are finalized, and we would really like the city to push this across the finish line." Zinyum Yang and Yan Wu Lim. "We are residents in Celine, 42 Arlington Drive. We would like the city to take over the project from Shipman to build the sidewalk. To our knowledge, the permits and plans have been approved. Our community is made up of very young families, and we would benefit greatly to have the safe drive sidewalk, have a safe sidewalk where we can take a stroll to the downtown area." Jen DeBruin. "My name is Jen DeBruin, and I live at Phase 2 of Huntington Woods. We moved from Chicago in 2018, and we were told when we built that there would be a sidewalk connecting our subdivision to town. This was very appealing to us, especially because we love the walkability of Chicago. We have three young children and look forward to the days when we could ride our bikes or walk downtown safely. It has been really disappointing to see many delays and promises that it would be built only to be further delayed. We are asking the city to please take over the construction of the sidewalk so that all the families in Huntington Woods can safely access the downtown." Trent DeBruin. "I'm a Celine resident who lives in Huntington Woods neighborhood, and ahead of the meeting tonight, I just wanted to support my support for having the city take over the sidewalk project connecting the Huntington Woods neighborhood to the downtown area. I have three young kids, and this project would be really significant in terms of improving our family's ability to access all the great aspects of the downtown area in a safe manner." And finally, is Jennifer Devon. "Dear council, first, thank you for your service. I value all elected officials and appreciate this opportunity to make public comment via written submission. I am a 15-year resident of the city of Celine and Huntington Woods subdivision. I join with my fellow residents in imploring the city to take over the sidewalk issue once and for all. I also strongly advocate to not wait any longer and start construction immediately. The Monroe to Macon corridor is not safe. From a narrow bend over the river to the speeding that occurs frequently, it is not safe to walk or ride bikes. Huntington Woods needs to be connected to the city like all other city developments. Our HOA has gone back and forth on this with Mr. Shipman, the Washenaw County Road Commission, the city, and contractors for years. We have fulfilled our part, and now we would like the city to put this to rest. Just in the last few weeks, another issue of drainage was brought up for the first time, greatly increasing costs. Now the developer refuses to put in additional funds. We need the city to step in. For over that day, I have paid six figures to open city taxes and expect the same services my other community members have, that includes safety and a sidewalk connecting us to town, among others. It is my understanding from the meeting today that the project plans have been updated as of March 2020 and have been approved by the Washenaw County Road Commission. The cement company is ready to go. The permit needs to be transferred to the city and additional funds need to be kicked in that was suggested earlier. Please make this a city project and execute quickly." And that's it.
Very good. Well, let me first, to all those residents of Huntington Woods, either Phase 1 or 2, who submitted comments, who are watching this evening, or who are attending in the audience, we appreciate your participation. Thank you for your comments, and as is enumerated at the end of the agenda, that is a discussion item that I will be addressing towards the conclusion of tonight's meeting. If you're unable to stay or participate, I will certainly follow up with the HOA's leadership tomorrow or Wednesday to provide you a full synopsis of what was discussed and decided, if anything is decided. Additionally, I think the first comment that you read, Clerk Royal, was from Bernard Miller. Mr. Miller is indeed correct. His father was on council. He was an outstanding council member and an excellent Parks Commission member, a longtime Parks Commission member. I believe he had some questions about a recent Eagle Scout project that was approved. If you could message Mr. Miller and make sure we get an email from him, I'm sure Parks Correct Director Scruggs, who oversaw that Eagle Scout project, would be delighted to follow up with him and address any questions and concerns that he may have. Are we clear on that, Clerk Royal?
I've never been in contact with him this evening.
Very good. You beat me to it. Thank you, Carla. Appreciate it. All right, well, we will proceed then to the one, the one presentation on tonight's agenda, which is Courtney Pelleran, Girl Scout Gold Award. Director Scruggs, do you want to take the lead on this?
All right, well, I'm happy to present to Courtney Pelleran. She has come before the Park Commission to present her project, "The Fight of the Native Bees," and I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you anything about it, so I'm going to leave it to Courtney. She's going to share her screen, I believe, and I'll let her present her project. And we're asking for approval to move ahead after the conclusion.
Very good. Thank you, Director Scruggs. Courtney, we welcome you here this evening. You may begin when ready.
Can someone give me permission to share my screen?
It's probably off.
Yep, just give us one second, Courtney. Our IT director is trying to correct that.
You can have it now.
So, I'm Courtney, I'm part of Girl Scout Group 1694. I'm working on my gold award, which is one of the highest awards of Girl Scout in its service. My project's title is "The Fight of Native Bees." My project is, my project is to bring public awareness, public awareness to native bees and educational design in native bees. I want, I, I want to do my project to teach people how native bees and so they can help protect them. My hope is that my project will encourage people to plant more flowers and build people so there's an increased native bee population and kind of pollination in general. A little bit about native bees. Beekeeper and mason bees, which are the bees I'm focusing on, are one of the most common native bees. They're most solitary bees, and they don't sting, like honeybees or yellow jackets. There is over 300, 600 different bee species just in the United States alone. They pollinate more flowers than a whole hive of honeybees, just a single one, making them better pollinators, which actually helps farmers because food was based on farming. Many farmers are running back to native bees to help pollinate. I propose placing my project, this is my project design, kind of example of a beehouse that I'm building, and I propose placing my project in three different parks. One is at Milbon, and in Redken. Are there any questions?
Very good. Any questions from the dais? No questions from the dais. Mr. Mayor Potem, Gearbahn, and Mr. Seale.
Just real quick, there's been a concern with hornets and so forth, that the parks and around the place, everything. What kind of expectation do you have from the, you know, the bees and everything impacting anybody walking around them, or do you feel they'll be really safe?
Solitary bees, because they're solitary, they end up stinging, and they only sting if someone's grabbing at them. They basically, if they're a last, like dying wish, they basically pollinate and lay eggs and reproduce.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seale.
Just like you, I was looking at your picture of the placement of Redken Park, is that near the backside of the old, I mean?
We've already addressed this in one of my other, when I was meeting with Parks Commission, I am moving it somewhere, so it's less, it's not here, the picture's all filled, I'm moving it in Redken.
Okay, very good. That's my only question. Thank you very much. It's a very nice project. You certainly enlighten me on some of these things.
Any additional questions? Okay, very good. Courtney, we appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director Scruggs. Appreciate your work on this as well.
Thank you very much.
We're going to transition now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion or with the request of any citizen or council member. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Mr. Delwork, I saw an email earlier today. Did you still wish to remove I have C-20-121, or did you get the clarification you were looking for?
I got the clarification from Intram City Manager Mike Green. There was a map that wasn't included in our packets, and once that map was provided, I was able to work through my concerns. If anyone else has concerns, I'm happy to talk about those issues, but I'm comfortable now leaving it in the consent agenda.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda as either amended or amended?
Your Honor.
Please.
I would like to have the capital improvement plan removed, please.
Okay, so C-20-119 will be removed from the consent agenda and placed as the first item, I believe, under new business. Yeah, we'll place, we'll place it as the first item under new business. So would that be a motion then to approve the agenda as amended? Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have the motion carries unanimously. Then we come to our first item under new business, the motion to approve the capital improvement plan.
I'll move to approve.
Move by Mitchell to approve. Is there a second? Second, was that Gearbahn? Okay, sorry, Mr. Gearbahn. Councilwoman Mitchell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The capital improvement plan is perhaps arriving with less fanfare than I think it has in years past. Is it true, Your Honor, that we've had a presentation on the plan and have departments presented their priorities and their ideas?
Generally, that's done in conjunction with our budget negotiations. So generally, the capital improvement plan is discussed and presented in its totality in April, May of each calendar year.
Okay, and that, I think there were discussions about, but I didn't, I don't recall a specific presentation for the capital improvement plan. So my, my question is, can we have such a presentation and perhaps with an emphasis on what do we need to do differently this year under our circumstances?
I think that would be, I think that would be a worthwhile exercise. Ms. Bennett, perhaps you and I and the Intram City Manager can chat, but I think adding the capital improvement plan, which is of course a living and breathing document, but a very important resource and tool, perhaps we could discuss that and address questions and concerns from city council at our next meeting, which would be on August the 17th. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, that's fine, Mayor. We did have a discussion of this during our budget process at the May 18th meeting. We had submitted it and said that it would be forthcoming with the, with the budget, but we were spending, spending a lot of time, a great deal of time with the budget process with the COVID, so we went through and realized that we didn't submit it when we submitted the budget, so it needed just to be adopted. But we'll be happy to review it at that next meeting's time.
So Clerk Royal, if you'd please add that as a presentation at the top of, of the agenda on August the 17th. You might be muted. Did you hear me, Terry?
I did.
Terry, okay. Anything further, Councilwoman Mitchell?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Additional questions, comments on this agenda item? Then we have a motion, the floor moved by Mitchell, seconded by Gearbahn to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-105, extension of appointment, Mike Green as Intram City Manager. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the extension of Intram City Manager Green from August the 3rd, 2020 through September 14th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mayor Potem, Gearbahn to approve, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Before I head over to the floor for questions or comments, Intram Manager Green, is there anything that you would like to share at this time?
No, sir.
Very good. I'll just make a brief comment, then we can address any questions, concerns from the dais or from those participating remotely. I've been very impressed with Mr. Green's performance over the last month, and strongly in favor of extending his contract to our first meeting in September, which would be the 14th. Comments, questions from the dais or from those participating remotely? Then we'll proceed to go. It's been promptly moved by Gearbahn, seconded by Dillon to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 19-120, 211 Monroe Street, Annie's Child Care Paving Reimbursement Agreement Amendment. This will be a motion to acknowledge the July 29, 2020 memo from Intram City Manager Green and to approve or not to approve the agreement, agreement amendment of $3,025.05 for a not-to-exceed total cost of $16,192.05.
All those to acknowledge?
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that, I'm sorry, Mr. Delorko is the second. Moved by Dillon, seconded by Delorko to simply acknowledge receipt. Mr., Mr. Green, do you care to go over your memo?
Yes, sir. Okay. First off, Annie's Childcare is now known as First Foundations Early Learning Center. Just wanted to cover there real quick. But last year, back in June, city council got into agreement with Annie's Childcare regarding their parking lot. The reason the city council did this is because the city has easement over that parking lot or public parking for the use to give to the park. So the agreement was essentially just a parking lot reconstruction project. Unfortunately, the project did not come to fruition back in last fall during construction season. And so when our team started reevaluating the project again, it was determined there needed to be more thorough work done on this project. And Mr. Fordice, you probably described that better than me if you have any specific questions. But naturally, due to that work, it increased the total cost of the project from construction and design engineering. It brought it up just over $6,000. And that's why we're looking for this contract amendment.
Very good. Engineer Fordice, are you on the line with us?
Yes, I am.
Do you care to elaborate on Mr. Green's presentation?
Yeah, I definitely recommend these changes to the scope of work. The original project that I inherited was fairly minimal approach to a parking lot renovation. And after we ordered the contract and then outside with contractor and design engineer, we started looking for a better way to do it. So this approach removes all the old asphalt. It repurchases it as base material and will improve drainage, which is one of the reasons that the parking lot failed in the first place. And has got a much longer life, just a little bit more money.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Questions for our city engineer or Intram City Manager? Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with Mr. Green, a real quick one. It says it's been verbally agreed to by the other party. I struggle with that, that it's not written agreement, that they're willing to this change.
At the time of writing, I only spoke on the phone with Ms. Depp, who is owner of First Foundations. I believe I do have an email that says she is in favor, but the main thing is I wanted you guys to be in favor of this before I sent her a new school. Because if I sent her and she signed it, brought it back to you guys and said no, no effect squared one.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And then I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Fordice, very quickly. Mr. Fordice, was the delay a factor in the scope of the project? Like, did the asphalt get worse because we delayed?
No, I mean, it's another year older now, but no. We, the delay was a result of trying to change the scope of work and coming up with something that was affordable and was just longer.
Okay, I appreciate that. I have a weird question to ask you. Is there an opportunity in this project to adjust the approach to this lot? It's a really awkward entrance. It's sort of like a single driveway that opens to a double. So when people are coming in and going, there's two lanes, but there's only actually one lane exit for cars. There's a weird cutout, because I think there used to be parking along, oh, the north side, like against the fairing property.
There's no inexpensive way to change that. We are making modifications to the pavement markings that will help with that a little bit. We're eliminating one parking space and kind of X-ing out that area to direct incoming vehicles more into the traveling rather than in the parking areas. So that's, that's the best we can do inexpensively to really fix it. We're talking about a whole new driveway approach and that would be probably the big kind of challenge.
Okay. The other thing is, and I don't know that the city has any control about this, the facility has trash cans that are in the lot that are sort of, kind of right on, like as cars would be traveling. So they would be up against the fairing property just as you sort of enter the parking lot aspect. Is that the best place for those?
I'm not sure. We could certainly take a look at that. I don't, I don't think there is any really gives us any control over that, but it is an access easement, so if they're repeating access to people's parking, we would have something to say about that.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Additional questions from the dais?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you. Mr. Fordice, my question was also about the driveway approach. Is there any type of code issue because the driveway is so narrow? Is that something that normally wouldn't be allowed under code?
If you were putting in that parking lot today, we would align that driveway approach differently. But I would consider that a grandpa, it's an infrastructure.
So it's a legacy, it's, it's a legacy ruling at this point? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Mr. Delorko.
Jeff, I'm wondering about what, you said what caused the delay was that you had to reevaluate the scope of the project. Does that suggest that the contract was underbid at the outset and we had to go back and look at what needed to be done?
It wasn't, it wasn't a case of the contractor not bidding enough money. It was when we got out there with two sets of eyes on the project, didn't like the existing scope of work and didn't think it would give us a long-term valuable product. So that's when we started working and trying to come up with, having all the ways to do a more, a better job.
Okay, so when we, when we sent out the RFP, then the scope of work was, was too narrow then?
Yes, I don't think it just, it didn't go quite far enough.
Okay.
It would have, it would have provided a smooth surface, but it didn't really address the drainage and it perhaps wouldn't last terribly long. Just one of the last moments.
Now, during the process of reevaluating the project, did you guys at all discuss what it would take financially to realign the project with current codes for the exit problem?
No.
Okay.
The only, the only look at that was with the pavement markings that I previously mentioned. Which is, to reconfigure the whole approach would be a significant hit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fordice.
Comments from? Go ahead, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Fixing the driveway approach could be done separately from this project if, if we really wanted to have to go back and remove the existing entry and construct it alone.
Do you have a sense if the property owner is amendable to a similar arrangement that we have now with the resurfacing?
I guess would be no, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, all right.
I, yeah, I can touch on that a little bit. Most likely, no. The fact that she's willing to come back to the table and do this agreement is great. Doing something that raises the price even more, even four or $5,000, I don't think it would be on board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Questions from those participating remotely? At the present time, I can only see Mayor Potem, Gierbach. Any questions, Mr. Gierbach?
None at this time. Justin managed to answer all of them.
Okay, I can't see Kamero Sulak or Seo. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Oh, Your Honor, I can do it.
I have a question.
Please.
Is there a safety concern with the approach for the driveway there? And with additional traffic, is there anything we should be concerned about for the safety of drivers or or isolates or anybody in any kind of traffic along there?
I don't see this creating any increase in traffic. And it's, there are no crashes there at all. So I'd consider it a safe drive approach. And it'll be slightly better with the revised pavement markings.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. That's all I have.
There are no additional questions. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Dillon, seconded by Delorko to simply acknowledge receipt. All those in favor of approving or acknowledging receipt, excuse me, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have the motion carries unanimously. Chair, we entertain now a subsequent motion to approve or adopt the agreement amendment of $3,025.05 for a not-to-exceed total cost of $16,192.05. Was that Gierbach?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seo, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seo, hearing none. All those in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We move on to new business item 20-125, wastewater treatment plant consulting engineering assistance. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 29th, 2020 letter from Tetra Tech and to approve or not to approve the consulting engineering assistance in the amount of $9,500.
Move to acknowledge, agree.
Moved by Mayor Potem, Gierbach to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Wygowski, I'll turn it over to you first, and then if you want to yield the floor to Mr. Rubel and/or his associates from Tetra Tech, feel free to do so.
Good evening. As you're aware, we're upending the administrative consent order with Eagle for ongoing wastewater violations. And some of these requirements require an engineering firm to work with us. We have a longstanding relationship with Tetra Tech and they're aware of the negotiations with Eagle. And Mr. Rubel has put a proposal together for high-end materials to assist us with that project. If you have specific questions about what's in the proposal, I would ask Mr. Rubel to jump in.
Mr. Rubel, Brian, we welcome you here this evening. Is there anything you'd like to add before we open it up for questions?
Mr. Wygowski, I think said it very well. Many of these items tend to be responded to by city staff. And to save costs, I think that's an excellent plan. So mainly three items that my proposal included. Number one was to work with Steve and his staff to outline what the updated O and M manual would be for the wastewater plant. Eagle would like to see that. Number two would be to work with a, on a schedule of improvements. And I think that's largely been laid out in the site study. So it's probably just a matter of dusting that off and renewing that with Steve's staff and people what you'd like to share with Eagle and the timing. And the third item is a tracking system, so as developments come online to track their impact on the sewer system. And I would argue the city really already does that with the computer lab that was developed a couple of years ago. The only thing I think we could add to that would be a tool to help summarize the very complex models that both city staff and Eagle could probably more readily understand that. And Eagle would like that he submitted each time a development comes online. So it would simply be taking that model and presenting a way to show the results that are very understandable. So those are the three big items that are in the proposal.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Please stand by for questions. Questions from the dais? No? Okay, question, Mr. Delorko, I apologize. Floor is yours.
One brief question for Mr. Rubel. The deadlines proposed in the schedule of having 3.2 submitted by September 1st and 3.3 submitted by December 1st, is that consistent with what's expected from Eagle and the ACO?
That's been going on for a few months. Those dates were originally proposed back in March or April. So there's a call with Eagle this week, and I would want to explore on that phone call. Getting another few months for those facilities. And I think they would be, they would be amendable to that based on, it really has been their, their response back to the city has been the way.
Okay, yeah, because that feels like those deadlines are looming very quickly. And it seems like there's a fair bit to do before those deadlines get here.
I think we need a few more months.
Okay, and you, you don't see them having a problem with granting that request?
I do not, because they have been sitting on it all summer. So they are the ones that are going to ask. I think they will need a few more months.
Okay, that's all I had.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rubel, I'm sorry, I meant to ask, it just was triggered by Mr. Delorko's question. Is part of your work going to need city staff to help you, or is this strictly a Tetra Tech project?
Well, some of the ACL tasks are 100% city, city staff.
Right.
Work on that. A couple, and these three items that I outlined, I do need at least a few hours of the plant staff's time to bounce ideas off of and get their input. But the majority of the production would be Tetra Tech.
Okay, and the, I guess my, my next question would be for Mr. Wygowski. Just is his schedule? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, there's something up on the screen. Is your schedule, will this work with your staff's schedule?
Yes, like Mr. Rubel has said, when Eagle originally proposed it, those dates were, you know, five, six months out. And I believe that's when they were proposed. The dates, once this is signed again, they will be extended in that time period for at least three months out. So Mr. Rubel and I have a good working relationship. I'm sure we can find time to get together and work on these issues.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Wygowski, can you talk a little bit about how the, this work, once completed, is going to change things for you?
One of the things that would be nice to have a comprehensive O and M manual, operation and maintenance manual. To reference for various operations and different pieces of equipment. One of the things that Mr. Rubel has already done with Tetra Tech is they've got an obulating computerized maintenance management system. So we're going to start being, implementing that and adding on to that with the help of the O and M manuals. By doing that, we'll be able to generate work orders and primarily work on preventative maintenance as opposed to corrective maintenance.
Right, I'm, I'm so happy to hear that phrase about the preventative maintenance. And then, do you see, as we're looking at a newer plant, do you see how you're going to dovetail these, these projects? And prioritizing preventative maintenance and upkeep?
Yes, as we get used to using the Lucidity System, which is the company that developed the software with the Redding System. Which we get that populated and use as we get new equipment online, new processes online. We simply populate that with the same format and just put in different frequencies and different paths and in there. So it should be very similar as we get new equipment also, or new processes, and that would be incorporated into the operation and maintenance manual.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any questions, comments from those participating remotely? I can see Gierbach and Seo. Yeah, I'll start with you, Mayor Potem, Gierbach. The floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm just glad that this is moving forward. As we've been discussing negotiation, I think this has come up periodically. The city manager was beginning to work on this prior to his departure. And so moving this forward now, I think is a good time to get it going, because it's going to be part of whatever we resolve and no longer needs to be delayed. I think this will actually help address for the interim until we figure out our final new plan, how that gets put in place. But this will address one of the, one of the concerns and moving forward on it right now is immediate. And I think great action for us to take at this time.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from those participating remotely? I can't see Mr. Kamero Sulak. Mr. Seo, anything?
I mean, Mr. Kamero Sulak, it is in the race.
Yeah, I have a question.
Please.
So the O and M manuals, where are we with those? That seems to be an important part. How far are we into that project?
This proposal will, we have manuals on different pieces of equipment. Part of this proposal is to incorporate those in a more comprehensive document. So after this is approved, if it is approved, then we can work with Tetra Tech on outlining what we would like to see and how they can put that together.
Okay, yeah, I understand. We've talked about it for a while. So Tetra Tech will be doing that task? Okay, great. I'm really looking forward to that. I'm going to fruition. And that's, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Very good. There's no additional discussion on the motion. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Potem, Gierbach, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon to acknowledge and to approve. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Isaiah, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. We move on to new business item twenty dash one twenty-six, final payment for River Oaks Kevlin paving projects. This will be a motion to acknowledge received July twenty eighth, twenty twenty memo from City Engineer Fordice to approve or not to approve the final payment of two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents to Asphalt Specialists Incorporated for the completion of the twenty twenty River Oaks Kevlin paving projects.
Moved to approve.
How about you to reverse order, Mr. CEO, will you move to acknowledge and to approve? Very good. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Director Fordice, do you care to make any brief comments?
We've got two street projects done. They look good. And if there are any specific questions, we have the project engineer, Scott Fisher, who's on the call.
Very good. Mr. Fisher, thank you. I drove both streets today. They both look good. Glad to have them completed. Tangible improvement to both the west side and the east side of our community. Questions for either our guest or Mr. Fordice? Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Mr. Fordice, just very quickly, do you know when the miscellaneous materials will be moved outside? I believe there's still signage that's laying on the ground, that type of stuff.
That should be removed very shortly. I know we were just in contact with the contractor today. Just a couple of clean up files, and they indicated they will be back shortly. And this is the same contractor that's working on Woodland and Maple, so they're definitely will be in town for a while.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Any questions from those participating remotely? Okay. Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Isaiah, the motion carries unanimously. Last discussion item of the evening is the business item twenty dash one twenty-seven against the sewer credit authorization. This will be a motion to acknowledge received the memo from City Treasurer Bennett to approve or not to approve the authorization to the city treasurer to administratively approve sewer credits under five hundred dollars.
Moved to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Mayor Porten, Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Treasurer Bennett, I appreciate your work on this. Do you want to provide a brief synopsis on this issue for both my council colleagues and for the public at large?
Absolutely. So as council may recall, we have been getting a number of inquiries about people who had a number of things that have deferred their water from going into the sewer treatment plant. And they have requested us to remove the sewer charges from that amount that they have to prove to us that did not go into the sewage treatment plant. So we had things like frozen vapor hoses. We had people that had water turned on on their outside spigot while they've been out of town by, you know, miscellaneous neighborhood. We had pipe sprees and break. We've had different things like that. And so instead of bringing each of them to council, we've outlined this very simple policy that states that if the credit is under five hundred dollars, if the petitioner can prove to us that the water did not go into the sewer with pitchers, or usually it's pitchers, and that our Department of Public Works has went out and verified that this has been taken care of. And then we also are going to require that the, that they have repaired the project so that it's not something that we would do again. So in the amount that all of those criteria is in that, this administrative authorization would just allow us to enact that credit in-house. Now, this is separate than penalty interest. This is just for sewer charges that they have to prove did not go into the sewage treatment. So I think that's pretty concise. And any questions that we have any answers?
Yes, it is. And I appreciate, I know we talked about this at one of our upcoming or one of our recent, excuse me, transition team meetings. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think this streamlines procedures and reduces, excuse me, the regulatory or bureaucratic burden that sometimes placed on our residents and business owners. So the ability to have you approve this administratively in-house, I think is a good and needed change. Questions for the dais? Ms. Mitchell.
Mickey, Joe, I absolutely approve of this. I'm so glad you brought this. Is this something that you would do a yearly report on or include it with your monthly department reports?
I think we would include it with our monthly reports.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Additional questions for the dais? Questions from any of those participating remotely? Okay, then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Mitchell to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Isaiah, the motion carries unanimously. We move to the discussion portion of tonight's agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force Reports from Council. Anybody in the dais? Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. First, the city manager hiring committee is moving forward and looking at posting that position. It will go live on August seventh. And from the census committee, if you have not done your census as of yet, you would be getting this card, which none of you can see, I think, because I'm too far from the camera. But this is your last opportunity to participate either by phone or online. The next step is in the very near future, you will be getting a knock at your door from a census taker. You will have to speak with them. You can speak through your door. It's a socially distance. But you are required to respond to the census. There is no way around it. So the best way to do it is just get it done as fast as you can online. If you are still in need of assistance, please feel free to reach out to me. My email is jdillon@cityofceline.org. The library, the senior center, and our courts office can also assist if you have any questions or concerns about it. It is a safe and secure online form, so that should not be an issue. And to end on a high note, Celine has had a really good response rate. We do have one of the highest response rates in the county, and we are definitely far ahead of the state rate. But we have a long way to go. Everyone needs to be counted.
Very good. Thank you for that timely and important update. Additional Committee, Commissioner, Task Force Reports. Councilwoman Mitchell.
I'm sorry, I just, I had other announcements.
Oh, okay. Let's stick with Commission, Committee, or Task Force Reports. Mayor Porten, Gearbaugh.
Just a minute, an update from the Planning Commission. The only thing we did last week was we denied a temporary sign at Versina. They wanted to place a big ten by, ten or eight by twenty-foot sign as a hiring thing on the back of a side of a semi. And the Planning Commission felt that was a request that was not needed at this point. We were looking at other options that were currently in our book of trades. So hopefully, they'll be able to find a solution that advertised or helped with it. The other thing Councilmember Mitchell had brought up, the televising of Planning Commission meetings, I should say. And we surveyed the group, and as we have in the past, it has been brought up and brought to attention. And the members did not really want it to, other concerns of some issues of being live and so forth. But recently, after canvassing the entire group, they felt that because of moving ahead and wanting through transparency and making sure that we should provide as many opportunities to provide the information, they were willing to move forward and have our meetings televised, recorded and televised. And that's probably how we're going to proceed. I don't think we're going to do them live at this point, but because there is concern about them and how we would interact in that type of situation. But they are willing to have them recorded and put out on video and so forth. I think that's a great opportunity. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Additional Committee, Commissioner, Task Force Reports.
Yes, I do.
Please.
Thank you. The Celine Youth Council met, and they have a lot of energy and willingness to help the community and especially frontline workers. So they are now sending letters to the Huron Valley ambulance. And they're also looking at getting involved in being election workers and just wanting to participate and throwing ideas around. And they like meeting and doing tech-ups on each other and throwing ideas on how to engage in the community. So I'm very happy with how the Youth Council is proceeding and the growth and energy of our young people. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Let's transition now. Reports or other announcements. Councilwoman Mitchell, I believe you have some.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's been talk on social media about an electronic sign talking, mentioning that there's a delay in Maple Road work. And people were really unsure of what that meant. So I don't know if you could make a statement, if you happen to know, or if there could be some social media posted at a later date to give information about that?
Yeah. Did you hear that question or comment, rather, Mr. Green?
Yes, sir. We'll look into it.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
I could provide some input on that.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Jeff.
So the city is partnering with Washington County Road Commission to reave a section of Maple Road from, basically from Maplewood up to the new city limits on the north side of the future of their farms. And they had gotten some information out about that project prematurely. They are working on that to postpone it until as far as it's latest we can. So it's going to happen closer to the later date.
Can you, Mr. Fordice, perhaps you can follow up with the interim city manager. But I think it'd be valuable to put some information on our city's homepage, if there isn't some already, about the forthcoming road projects and maybe those that are ongoing. So we have two then on Maple Road, some patching further into town, a more traditional resurfacing. We have a reconstruct going on currently on Woodland Drive from the entrance of Davco and MMI to essentially the city limits where they're installing a roundabout of textile on Woodland. And then I believe on August tenth, we, weather permitting, will have projects that will begin on Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols. I think it'd be important to put something on the city website, on the homepage, and then also maybe to disseminate some stuff via social media.
Good.
Thank you. Additional reports or announcements?
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. CEO.
It is the weeds and the current being started up here are becoming very healthy, very mature. We need four or five people, so we need some attention.
Yes, I believe Mr. Green can give an update on that, because that was discussed per Councilwoman Dillon's request at our most recent transition team meeting. I believe the property owner has been cited, but I'll let Mr. Green provide an update.
Can you ask your question one more time, Mr. CEO? Sorry, that's part of it.
It's just the weeds and the current being happening need some attention.
Yep, they are getting cited. Luckily, they were, they finally did put the fence around the retention base. But yeah, they still need to address those weeds tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Green, for our own edification, about how long do we wait between, when a citation is issued until we send a DPW crew out to mow or remove weeds or debris if the property owner has not complied?
Yeah, we try to work with our property owners. If they're unresponsive, we normally wait two to three days. If they are responsive, they say, hey, we reached out to them today, and they say they will be on their Thursday, Friday. We normally give them the benefit of the doubt.
Very good. Additional announcements? Reports or announcements? Councilwoman Dillon.
Are you just going to mention about voting?
I didn't catch that.
Are you going to mention about voting?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Please remember, if you haven't voted already, that tomorrow is our primary election. And I would also note that, well, this goes without saying, but I'm going to mention it anyways. If you still have an absentee ballot, you'll want to hand deliver that tomorrow, ideally by coming into City Hall and providing it to somebody in the clerk's office. But the polls are open from seven to eight. And we do have voting stations at Liberty School and the First United Methodist Church. Thank you for that. Any other reports or announcements? Then let's transition to an update on the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Wiegowski, are you still with us? You may be muted.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good. Floor is yours.
The clarifier that was offline for an extended period, again, I apologize for that. We had the pump on site last meeting, and we pumped it down during the week. And last Tuesday, we had Michigan Power Roddy come out and run their machine through the line. And it brought up a fair amount of material. We also had them try to televise lines, see if you could see any cracks or obstructions. Due to the bends in the line, they weren't able to get the camera very far. It is running now, and the sludge is flowing well. But I think it's, we're having them come back on Wednesday to do our grid lines as well. And I think it would be prudent to do all our lines once a year, just to make sure that that greasy lining that constricts the line is removed. So like you said, they're coming back on Wednesday. We did have a problem with Huntington Woods station. We've been getting calls all summer from DTE about oil shortages. And they've been transferring power from one area to another, kind of connected. We were having problems in the afternoon on Huntington Woods pump station, so we were running our generator quite a bit. And our generator did overheat some. It was during really hot weather. And unfortunately, we had to take the doors off the generator, let them prop up there. And as soon as they did tell us about that, we prepared the problem, put some caution tape around there and put them back on. We shouldn't have had the doors off. But long story short, DTE has figured out the problem that we were having in that area, and they fixed that. So it's been running well since then. The other item, the Nova filters, we had three Nova filters have, the handles have ripped. And that's an abnormal wear and tear. So I've ordered a dozen of them, and they're on their way.
Other than that, those units are still working properly?
Correct. The mechanical portion is working fine.
Good. Questions for Mr. Wiegowski? Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Steve, I'm going to start with the water treatment plant. There were a couple of posts lately on social media about a bleach smell coming from water. Is there something that the city is adding? Is that, there were a lot of justifications from armchair scientists on social media. So I thought maybe you could clarify.
So we had sodium perchlorate, which is basically a bleach, it's how we disinfect the drinking water. We're allowed to put four milligrams per liter or large per million into the system. We normally put about one point five, leaving the plant to total chlorine, because it dissipates as it moves through the system or as it sits in elevated areas. So normally, out in our system, we'll see about point two to point four milligrams per liter. So we did buy a new pump a couple of months ago, and it's much more efficient. So we had a hard time maintaining a good residual, and the new pump has been very good at that. So it's well within the limits and specifications for fluoriation. It is probably a little more chlorine than people are used to. And some people are more sensitive to the smell than others.
Okay, thank you on that. Now, on the wastewater treatment plant, which Nova filter is the one with broken springs? Is it the one that we're already in the warranty period, or is it the one that was still in the hundred days?
So the one that's under warranty period has one panel that's torn, and the other one has two.
Okay.
And just so you know, there are a hundred and ninety-two panels between the two filters.
Holy shloah. Okay. So yeah, one or two is a small number then. Okay. And you said those are just normal wear and tear? They're not defects?
Correct. They said they can normally last five to eight years. It's actually been four years, but only three of them have failed. So, you know, that's fairly normal according to the representative from Nova, who is very honest man.
Right. Well, I appreciate that, but I mean, three years, but those filters actually haven't run for three years. So I mean, we're getting really low on like return on investment if they should be lasting five years. So I'm kind of a little concerned about that part. So the other thing I'm going to hit upon is, we're still getting a lot of odor complaints. Is it due to the clarifier? It seems like everything is sort of back running. Where is this odor coming from?
That's a good question. You know, I think one of the factors, it's been extremely hot, adnormally hot. My scrubber is working well. My scrubber is working well. I spoke with Mr. Green earlier today about the meter that we had out to regard the odor log. I hope we're kind of at, and I told Mr. Green I'll get him that information by Friday, and he suggested giving a weekly update on Friday on what proper measures in there. I can't say where it's coming from. We could smell a little bit this morning from the inlet building, but again, I don't have a very good sense of smell, so I'm relying on the meter and other people.
Okay. And have you been getting any ticks on the meter? Like, are, I know most of the time you're saying it's really coming up at zero.
And every time I've checked it, it's zero, but I'm going to download the data. I've got to upload the software onto my computer, and I can download the data this week, and we'll see if we have any hits on that. That, that meter has been placed very close to this Armbruchers property, so we can get a sense of what's coming in that direction.
Okay. And can you remind me again about that meter, of what smell it detects? Because it's not going to pick up general odor, correct? It's looking for something very specific?
Correct. It's a hydrogen sulfide meter, and many plants have them in the parts per million range. The one that we ordered to add online is in the parts per million range. So it's very sensitive, and it's only for that constituent. So, by and large, in wastewater treatment, that is the vast majority of odors. The other ones that you may have are usually really overcome by the hydrogen sulfide. So it is possible that there's other types of odor, other different sulfur compounds, or methane, or what have you. I will say that the flame gas burner, if you add that repair, it's operating very well. So, again, hydrogen sulfide is 99% of the time the culprit. It could be something else.
Okay. Thank you very much for the information.
Additional questions? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Wygalski, I appreciate you working with that equipment. I had written to my green some time back and said, hey, I thought we had equipment. Can you talk a little bit about your procedure when somebody reports odor? What do you check? What do you use, you know, do you use that equipment? Is it a different evaluation?
So the main things that we check are the things that we can control. So we check to see that the bioscrubber is operating. We check to see that the carbon scrubber is operating, and that our mechanisms for the clarifiers and RBCs are operating also. Also, we may check for any unusual odors that may be coming into what we call our influent well, or the raw wastewater. Fortunately, the city of Salina, as far as I know, and when I've been there, we don't have any hot ball type manufacturers that put out specific odors, like say, like food manufacturers or something, that may be dumping, adding waste, or something like that. So normally, you know, the vast majority of Salina's wastewater is domestic waste, which has a hydrogen sulfide smell. So we don't believe it's any commercial or industrial source. So we make sure that the equipment that we do have is operating correctly, because other than that, we have very little that we can do unless we identify an unusual source.
And then if, and I don't remember, are you sending, are you still recording the number of complaints?
I don't record all of them. I've checked on that.
Okay. And then again, if people do have trouble, what, they should call a phone number, is that right?
Yeah, I want to get on my cell phone number.
Uh-huh. And how is that distributed so that neighbors know? And thank you, by the way, for that commitment. How do neighbors know that number? Do they have to call the plant during the day and talk to you, or what's the mechanism if people want to talk to you?
Yeah, normally, if they call me, then it'll be transferred to me, but I'll make sure if not, I'm on the website, I think it's on the website.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. It sounds like this procedure is, you know, what you can do, and thanks for outlining that.
Mr. Wygalski, when, I haven't called you, well, I think it was a couple weeks ago, and I don't recall, but when you call and you get, if an individual calls and they get your voicemail at the wastewater treatment plant, does your greeting mention your cell phone number?
I don't know that.
Okay. If not, I would recommend that you add that. My suggestion. Additional questions, either from the deists or from those participating remotely? Mr. Delaware?
Good evening, Mr. Wygalski. I just want to get back to the Nova filter problem. It says in your report that it's due to high solids loading from the sludge clarifier. Is that a function of the secondary clarifier being down, or is that a different problem?
No, it's a function of the clarifier being down, and having a higher hydraulic loading than the one in the clarifier.
So that problem has since been ameliorated by the secondary clarifier being restored to function?
Correct. The solids content has gone back down toward the well.
And the sludge line is open, and the tank is full, and it's operating as you would expect?
Correct.
Okay, very good. That's all I have.
Mr. Kamara Sulek, can I leave you with a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. So, for the north clarifier, your report says that the line was, that the pipe that's been, was clogged, they tried to run a scope down it, but weren't able to do so because of the bends. Is there any chance that there could be problems in that area? That, I mean, could there be cracks, or still a little bit of, a little bit of clogging?
So that is possible. So what we had been doing prior to Michigan Power Rodding was back flushing that line, and that was having intermittent success, so it was partially clearing it, and then it would plug again. So we had Michigan Power Rodding come with a high-powered rotor, which they put the hose with really high water pressure. They put that out about 300 feet from the clarifier all the way to near the sludge pumps. And then when they pull that back, it brings back all of the stuff that's been lining the pipe, so that clears that entire pipe off. After that, they put in a TV camera on a line, and they could only get that out about 60 feet, because every time it went to make a bend, the lines would get dirty, for lack of a better word, from coming into the corner of the sludge hole. So they weren't able to televise it. They did power around the entire.
Okay, so the flow rate is acceptable levels then?
Yes, we power routed it, and then we were flushing it, we could see the water coming up very well, and we were using the pump to add as we were at flushing it. It seems to be completely clear.
Okay. So that's going to be a normal process to do once a year?
I think that makes sense, yes.
All right. Although that's good, I hate for this to happen again. So I'm glad that's been addressed. I still wish we could figure out what the, what the smell is, and where it's coming from, because there are still a lot of complaints, and it does smell over there. And then, where are we with the fence? It's been a while since we've talked or gotten any update on what we're doing as far as that goes.
As you recall, I brought several options to give votes over several meetings, and no decision was made on, no direction was given to me on, from your end, on a machine identity, several options, and we looked at adjacent property owners, and that's where it was left.
Okay. I think we need to revisit that.
Yeah, why don't you do this, Mr. Wygalski? The information that you provided, I think it was back in the spring, if you could get that to Mr. Green again, and we'll disseminate it, council will make sure it's in the packet for our next meeting on the 17th.
Certainly. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wygalski. That's all the questions that I have for now.
Okay. I don't think Mr. Seale has any questions. I can't see Mayor Lieutenant Gervais, are you good?
No, I have a question, a couple questions.
Please.
Steve, I believe I forwarded you an email, there was a resident from 194 Southian Arbor Street on July 22nd that had a concern about the smell. So I just wanted to acknowledge his email to me and make sure that we record that. You know, as we continue to talk about this odor issue and everything, we hired a consultant, and this is not for you, Stephen, Stephen, I want to make, we hired a consultant, and then we had a company that came in and built this facility. I would like to reconsider having that consultant come back in, because they are on Lydia Rush, and they had identified most of it, and now it seems like we haven't identified it. I kind of want to take them on their word, but at this point, I'm not so sure they identified, and after spending what we've spent, it would seem that we could ask them for a little bit more guarantee on what they actually provided and guaranteed us. So at this point, I know Steve's attempting to try and do what he's doing, but we need to have them come back and tell us. From my perspective, we hired experts, they said they were optimistic to address it, and we're still in this issue, and I think those experts need to, I don't know what we call it, carpet, but that's my two cents for tonight. Thank you.
I actually think that's an interesting perspective, or an interesting suggestion. So, Mr. Wygalski, Mr. Green, this of course predates your tenure, but the company that Mr. Gervais is referring to is Webster Environmental, who did a comprehensive analysis of our wastewater treatment plant, and then made some subsequent recommendations. I do think I've stated this publicly in the past, I think the odor issues are substantially better than they were a year and a half ago, or two years ago, but on occasion, we still seem to have some persistent noxious odors. So I do think there's value, and perhaps we discussed this at our upcoming transition team meeting, but I would, I think there is value in re-engaging Webster Environmental, seeing if we can have them come up and assess how they believe our odor abatement project is working, and to potentially identify additional deficiencies, if, if is the key word, if indeed they exist.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just one other issue, as you had mentioned, I am somewhat aware of American soy, and Mr. Green had mentioned in his previous work at Three Rivers, Three Rivers, I believe, that there was an issue with the breweries and what they were discharging. And considering that we have a couple in town at this point, we have American soy and rotting soybeans have a distinct and massive issue with the odor, I would like to continue to address what's coming out of eating discharge in those types of situations. But, again, those could be sources, but it may be that it's just something that comes through our plant, and as you said, maybe it's an environmental, but hopefully, whatever we do in terms of bringing back and assessing, well, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, Ms. Dillon, please.
Thank you. Very quickly, Mr. Wygalski, the other day, it looked like there was somebody on our dam. Were they actually inspecting it?
Yes, the special group came and inspected the dam on Friday.
Awesome.
And, yeah, they have two people there, and they did a fairly comprehensive inspection, and I'm not sure when they'll be issuing the report, but we also discussed some of the problems that we're having in operating the sluice gates, and they are going to provide us with some information on some resources that may be able to address that. They did mention that putting in an automated drive for the sluice gates might be around $50,000 to $60,000, which pretty much precludes that. But somebody who works around and with them may be able to give us some advice on how to make those turns a little easier. And we have to talk about putting telemetry back into the system, so we do get an early warning system when the water is rising. So once we give a report, we'll look at our options on that, and bring it before you for action.
I do still have concerns that we have a temporary barricade that we're utilizing for a safety measure there. That's been in place now for quite some time. Is there a plan as to when that railing is going to be replaced?
I can certainly speak to DPW and see what the status is.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chop, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Wygalski, I just want to go back to when you were discussing a fence. Are you talking about repairing the existing fence that's there, or this was another privacy fence discussion?
We've brought up with the status on the fence along the this Armbruchers property, and any action that would be taken on that.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, is that referring to a new fence, or would that be replacing the one that's there?
What we'll do is bring the options that I brought before council before, so we can refresh everybody about that discussion.
Okay. And then, I guess this would be a question for city manager Green. You know, when you, when you say it's $50,000 or $60,000 for this piece of equipment, I don't know how much maintenance we've had to pay into these dams. If, you know, if we haven't really had a lot of maintenance over the last 20 years, well, then $50,000 or $60,000 is a drop. You know, if we're paying that every three months, yeah, that might be a bigger issue, but I think it's worth a discussion.
Sure. And Mike, if you don't mind me talking, I can elaborate a little bit. So the $50,000 to $60,000, that wasn't, was not a maintenance item, that was to make the valves easier to turn, raise the sluice gates, we manually turn those currently. So we'd probably open that dam maybe, I don't know, three to five times a year, so it's quite a bit of money for the amount of time we're going out there. It would be nice if there was something easy that would assist this, but maybe they could provide some suggestions on how to make that easier manually, as opposed to running electricity, and perhaps having a generator there to assist with that. So it's not a maintenance item for the dam, it's for opening the sluice gates.
So I appreciate that clarification. Is there any danger, any possible danger, that somebody who's opening those gates, is there a danger involved?
Well, the danger is it's a heavy, heavy job, it's hard to turn, so, yeah, that's why I was hoping to get something that would make it, you know, less manually intensive. But there's not a danger of falling in, or there is the danger of, you know, wrenching a knee, hurting an elbow or shoulder, those type of, those type.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Wygalski. Appreciate your time this evening.
Everyone, can I ask one follow-up question?
Quickly, please.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wygalski, how long does it take, and how, is this, when they open the sluice gate, is it one, one person, two people, and how long does it take to open it and close it?
It depends who's available, because you know, when we're doing that, it's during a storm or an electrical outage or that type of thing, so. The last storm, I did it, and you've got to rest, you have to turn it several times. You can turn it about a half wheel each turn, and by whole revolution, you're not moving it very much, so it takes quite a few turns, so I'm thinking it probably takes 15 minutes to open one, about maybe four inches, but it's a lot of heavy work during that time, so you have to kind of rest. It's constant briefing out for, like, a better way to run that wheel.
Okay, and that's probably not a very desirable task for having.
Correct. If you have two people, obviously, it's a little better where you can trade off, but for one person, it's, for one thing, you have to be a fairly decent shape or muscular jerk to even turn it at all. So, I don't know, where's me on?
Okay. And that could be factored into getting it, getting that upgraded. Thank you for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Mr. Wygalski. Intrum city manager Green, do you want to provide a brief update on the downtown street closures?
Yeah, sure, kid. This week, I focused on four restaurants, four big restaurants on the south side. As you guys all know, Dan decided to kind of opt out for now in North Ann Arbor, so that's staying open going forward. But just a quick little update, Brecken has increased their seating by 70 seats, and as of right now, Paul and his team are a big fan of this program. Max, the first week we did this, outside sales was 39% of their business. This past week, it's 52%. So as of right now, Paul and his team are also in favor of keeping this going until October 31st. And realistically, a lot of them want to keep this going every summer, but we'll discuss that later. And then Smokehouse, Smokehouse is actually taking advantage of the most so far. Approximately 78% of their sales are coming from outside seating. They have They have about sixty seats outside and they're about back up to fifty employees between their two locations. And then we also spoke with Salt Springs earlier today, even though their street's not closed up there, they've had no issues whatsoever, and this week, Chief, now, just gonna focus on parking to see if we can kind of reevaluate how that downtown parking situation is, especially on Michigan Avenue.
Very good, thank you for that. Questions from the deists? Questions from those participating remotely? Mr. Seo? You're muted, Jack.
Mr. Seo, you're muted.
Hello, I'm sorry. Any feedback from Karen Carrigan about how leave affected her business?
No, I, I, I reached out to her this morning, I didn't get to get a hold of her, but I had talked to her last week. Every time I talk to a person, everything seems to be going well, but my plan's always given either. I know she gets the chance to take advantage of Smokehouse in the morning, their seating, so they have a nice little partnership, and I think Chief Ray's in his hand.
Yes, I did, I did speak to Karen the other day, she's doing her best to support, you know, her, the surrounding businesses with this one, but it's kind of in favor of a year-long closure, because it is, it is impacting her business in a negative way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Green, I think it would be valuable to have another update on this issue in two weeks, so I'd ask you to keep this on the, the agenda as a discussion item.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. Well, let's transition then to the Huntington Woods sidewalk. I don't want to get into a long, protracted discussion on this issue tonight, but I do want to provide some, some background to some of our newer council members and then also provide my sentiments on, on the best way to move forward. So, excuse me, as was mentioned earlier this evening by, by a number of residents, a connecting sidewalk was first proposed and discussed in the early two thousands when Huntington Woods was, was first conceived. Unfortunately, the talks, promises and commitments offered by the city at that time were little more than conversational styrofoam and empty rhetoric, and we failed to deliver or create any guarantees that a connecting sidewalk would, would be constructed and installed.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead.
You're very difficult to understand, sir, I don't know whether your microphone is on or...
Is it better now, Jack?
Yes, yes.
I've gotta hold down this microphone, excuse me, my apologies. So, fast forward to about four years ago, when Huntington Woods Phase Two was reviewed and ultimately approved by, by the Planning Commission, a stipulation was inserted in the final site plan for Mr. Shipman to construct said sidewalk, connecting Huntington Woods with the rest of the city of Celine. This project, while it is relatively small in scope, is multi-dimensional and complex. It is a, a project that the city wants, connecting two sections of the city, which are separated by essentially a peninsula of private homes in Celine Township, and the sidewalk is within the jurisdiction, the right-of-way of the Washoe County Road Commission, that's why they need to sign off and that's why they need to issue permits. So, suffice it to say, this, this issue has, has lingered for more than fifteen years and as one of the individuals expressed in their public comments this evening, it's time to, to deliver. And I would also note that while this will benefit the existing residents in Phase One and Phase Two, it will ultimately benefit residents in Phase Three. Construction of Phase Three will likely begin this fall, and I expect in the next five, ten and fifteen years, additional growth in our south central corridor. Mr. Shipman, who was the developer of Huntington Woods, who's also the developer of Arboretum, is a friend and a colleague, and he's executed excellent projects in our community and elsewhere, but in my judgment, at this juncture, he is not able to move forward and, and execute or provide oversight for the connecting sidewalk. Therefore, I do propose that the city assume responsibility for the oversight and construction of the sidewalk. At this point, all we have the power to do is advocate, support and encourage, we don't have the ability to actually construct a sidewalk, and I think we have the, the means to, to do so. So, my, my proposal this evening would be to empower, to allow, excuse me, city staff, myself and legal counsel to engage with Mr. Shipman to see if we can develop the framework for a settlement agreement by which he would relinquish control of the sidewalk and his money so that the city could construct a, a connecting sidewalk. I would also note for the public record that because Mr. Shipman is a, is a friend and colleague, I've already broached this subject with him, we had initial conversation about this, I think it will be two weeks this Thursday, and he seemed very amenable to this. So, I would like to follow up with him in the coming weeks and then present something tangible for you to digest at one of our upcoming meetings. I could obviously provide a lot more context and clarity on this issue if you'd like, and I'm happy to open it up for questions or concerns. Mr. Delarco, please.
I, I remain unclear on Mr. Shipman's position in the sense that, is it because these additional requirements from the Washoe County Road Commission have driven up the price beyond what he had already committed that's caused the delay? Or, or is there some other reason that he has committed himself to other things and he has to absolve himself of this responsibility?
No, my understanding is Mr. Shipman has essentially retired at this point. When they closed on Phase Three of Huntington Woods, that was the last parcel property he was, he was in the process of development. The cost, I think, is a factor, but as I alluded to earlier, Mr. Delarco, also, there is a inherent complexity and burden with this particular project because it is multi-jurisdictional.
Okay. So, I, I'm curious about the, the Washoe County Road Commission's position because these additional drainage requirements seem to have cropped up at the eleventh hour, which took everyone in the HOA by surprise, and I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around what transpired there, as I was, I was not part of those negotiations.
Yeah, and actually, earlier this afternoon, three members of the Huntington Woods HOA, the Intrum City Manager and then myself, Matt via Zoom with Mark McCullough, who is, I don't know what his exact job title is, but he's essentially in charge of permits at the road commission. So, and Mr. Green can correct me if I, if the synopsis that I'm about to provide is incorrect. A associate of Mark issued a permit last year for this project, and upon review and inspection of the permit, Mr. McCullough found some deficiencies, specifically with drainage and water. And so, it was his decision to revoke the permit and to offer a new one as long as the drainage and water issues were resolved. That was done back in December. Now, there is some disconnect as to, well, Mr., the gentleman for the road commission communicated that to Mr. Shipman's engineer, Washoe Engineering, Joe Maynard, who is excellent, and apparently somewhere along the line, that was not communicated to Mr. Shipman. So, this spring and early summer, Mr. Shipman was still trying to bid out the project, but he was doing it under the specs of a permit that was issued in 2019.
I see.
Does that seem like a reasonable synopsis, Mr. Green?
Yes, sir.
That does provide some clarification, thank you.
Yep. Additional questions, council of the deists? Councilman Dillon?
Thank you. I, I think that this issue requires a full-blown revising, because if you remember, two years ago, when we committed to this amendment, the city agreed to forty thousand dollars. We are way beyond that at this point with, with what the road permission is, and so, I don't know that we can financially absorb that kind of expense at this point, so that's, that's a whole issue that we need to look at.
But if I may, we won't know the answer to that question until we establish with Mr. Shipman whether he's even interested in relinquishing control of the project and can develop some sort of settlement.
I, I understand that. That's what I'm getting at, there is a lot of moving pieces right now. There's talk about easements on the Adient property, which I don't know that the city should be remotely being involved in that at this point, and then, as Mayor, you and I've had a discussion, you know, maybe there's a better option in that maybe the sidewalk could be on the east side of McComb. It would go over more properties, but it would be, maybe there's less drainage issue.
Yeah, we, we, I actually brought that up today with, with Mr. McCullough from the road commission, and again, Mr. Green can correct me if I'm wrong, he did not believe that transferring the sidewalk from the west to east side would reduce the cost in any way.
Okay. The other option is, you know, is there an option to put some sort of sidewalk pathway at the rear of Huntington Woods, probably between Phases One and Two, I think would be the optimal, where it would bring, the path would bring them into Curtis Park, which would bring you right up to a sidewalk on Michigan Avenue. It's slightly west of where they would come out, but maybe that's a better compromise. Maybe, I, I don't know what the cost would be, I don't know what the logistics. I think at this point, we need to sort of revisit the entire process again and see. I know that Mr. Shipman had committed some funds, and whether those funds are going to transfer in totality is another issue. I think there's just a lot of moving pieces, and I'm not sure I'm ready for the city to take on this project until we can have a better understanding of that.
Do you show council questions? Councilwoman Mitchell?
Your Honor, I guess, I've been thinking about this project for a long time, and I, I agree that everything would have to be revisited from scratch. We don't, we don't have official city bids, we don't have all of the, the possibilities looked at. I mean, it's one thing to have a verbal report, you know, I talked to so-and-so and he said this, but we just can't do things that way anymore. We can't, we have to have things documented. I, I asked for documents regarding this, and I couldn't find anywhere that the city of Celine did anything other than commit financially to this sidewalk. I don't know what our standing is right now, I, I don't know what our...
If I may, because I tried to explain that earlier today when you and I had a conversation. The city made a, or approved, excuse me, a stipulation in the final site plan for Huntington Woods Phase Two. This is a private initiative currently, being pursued by Mr. Shipman and, and his associates, so our ability to access certain information is limited because it doesn't fall under the scope and jurisdiction of city government currently.
Right, and so, I, I guess I'm not sure what our standing would be even if we were to take on this project. It's not city property, how are we to explain that we're taking this on?
Well, I, I think the explanation is, is quite simple really, which is, a developer and his associates have had ample time to execute a connecting sidewalk, connecting two portions of the city of Celine, and they've not been able to, to execute or move forward. And I think we have the resources and ability to do that and to finally bring to fruition a project that a great number of our constituents have identified as, as very important and critical to their quality of life.
True, and, and it is critical to their quality of life, and I guess my worry is we, we have to start from scratch, and because the, the time issue is mentioned, I think by many residents, I, I don't know if they understand that if, if the city takes it on, it's gonna take a lot of time, because we will want to do things like look at the alternatives and have those alternatives documented. It's not going to be, well, the city's gonna do this, we have the money, let's go. That, I don't see that happening.
I mean, I think if there was, I think if there was commitment to do this, I think we could execute a, a project, once we approved a settlement agreement with Mr. Shipman.
Well, we have commitment to do this a long time.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I've admonished you in the past about interrupting, so please don't interrupt me, I interrupt people. The point I was trying to make is, if we were to approve a settlement agreement with Mr. Shipman, if we were to, if we were able to maintain Joe Maynard from Washoe Engineering as our consultant on this, he's already in the process of accepting bids for the revised permit, I do think we could execute something in the not-too-distant future.
Well, that's, that's your opinion, and I, I think part of the issue is that you have been talking to residents without the whole body. You know, when, when they talk about promises, at no time has the council promised anything other than money, but I heard you say it tonight, we will move heaven and earth to get it done.
I did not say that, I was quoted as saying that.
I think I heard you say that in a meeting too.
I didn't say that tonight, so, just to clarify, you just said that I said that tonight, I did not say that tonight.
So, I, I guess, I, I'm willing to do it, it needs to be done, it is very complicated, it cannot be, we can just rush forward with everything we have in place.
Well, I don't, I don't, just to clarify, I'm not, nobody's suggesting, I've never used the word rush, I've never used the word, you know, pursuing with, I think we could execute a project in a timing manner. It is multi-dimensional, it is complex, there are a lot of things that would have to fall in, into place, but I think we have the wherewithal and the ability to do that, and more importantly, as was expressed by dozens of residents tonight, this is a project that they view as important and essential to their quality of life, it's been talked about for fifteen years, let's move forward and try to execute something, a, a quality project that will, which, that will benefit them in a favorable way.
Correct, and, and when we talk about quality, moving soil on Adient property, you know, I, I don't care what side the drainage has to go on, but I'd much rather go on the side that doesn't have an environmental problem with it. I mean, I, I can't emphasize enough that we have new members of council, we have a different council, we want to get it done, and we can't say so many ifs, there are a lot of ifs.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're a little confused, let me help, help settle some confusion.
Am I confused?
Because all I'm asking for this evening is permission to continue to engage Mr. Shipman to see if we can develop a, a settlement agreement whereby we could then discuss some of these other particulars that are associated with the city assuming oversight responsibility for the sidewalk. I'm not looking for a motion to be made tonight, I'm not looking for anything to, to be approved or adopted, all I'm looking for is consensus to move forward, to continue to negotiation and then to bring something tangible back to city council that could be digested, considered and, and potentially rejected if that was the, the, the position of the majority of my colleagues.
So, are you continuing to negotiate or is it a private agreement that you're seeking? Because the lines really seem to be blurred, and I, I'm just not sure where one starts and the other begins.
Well, no, I, 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 let me be as emphatic as I can, it'd be a conversation that we would have with Mr. Shipman, and then ultimately, anything that was, anything that was approved would have to be approved by city council.
Those are all my questions.
Okay, very good. Questions from those participating remotely? Mr. Seo, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not at all familiar with these new drainage requirements, can you please update me a little bit on that quickly?
Well, one of the things I thought about this, thank you for that question, and I thought about this in advance of the meeting, and, and Mr. Green, perhaps between the two of us, we can follow up with Mr. McCullough at the road commission, but I would like that the language contained within that new permit provided in writing to the city and then disseminated to my council colleagues. So, my understanding from our conversation today, Mr. Seo, was that Mr. McCullough identified in the previous plans that water would be diverted to a private property, which is obviously in violation of, of state statute. So, he revised the permit to, to divert the water elsewhere and proposed as, as just an idea, as a thought, that potentially an easement could be secured on the Adient, Adient property to discharge water and thereby, in theory, perhaps reduce the cost of the connecting sidewalk by ten to twenty percent.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I've lost Mr. Gierba, are you still there, Mayor Portem?
Yes, I'm here.
Any thoughts or questions?
Yeah, I see this no differently than what we would probably talk about in terms of walkway or whether we're gonna do along Michigan Avenue or anything on the west side of the city. At this point, I think it was a pie in the sky wish when this was done back fifty years ago, it was a recommendation by planning, this developer agreed to it, but I don't think at that time, they looked at all the issues, and even myself, I was concerned because I knew there was going to be multiple government agencies involved, but if it was a private individual was able to get this all coordinated, it'd be great. I, I agree, I think at this point, it's no different than what we're talking about throughout our entire community about making sure that we have a walkable community where they're all connected. You know, we can have funds to contribute it to this project by the developer, and I think we have the ability, because we can put in roads, we can put in sidewalks, we have the ability to make those, you know, happen, and in this situation, there's right-of-ways where it's all identified, yes, there's concerns from other property owners, but we as a council, I think, to get this to move ahead, are there concerns with where it's being relocated? Yes. There was some cleanup done on some of that Adient property that was already done on the... on the east side, or I should say the south side of the river. Um, but, and then the other aspect of it is, we should look at the county. The county, I don't think is this, um, doesn't want this in here, but they should have some funding in the game because they're asking for a renewed village tomorrow, and some of that money is supposed to be towards sidewalks of this nature. So we should be able to tap into that, especially, because this is being, it's being their requirement for an eighty thousand dollars or whatever it is, additional cost to address drainage and everything else. So from my perspective, I believe the city probably is, at this point in time, the best coordinator to do it. I agree with Ms. Mitchels and some of the other ones that we need to look at this as a whole plan to make sure it gets done right. And I don't want to disappoint the Huntington Woods group, but unfortunately, there are too many people in this thing, and they keep bringing up these issues. And we've got to get a whole settlement at one point and do it right, get it done, so that they can enjoy this. And unfortunately, yes, it's one of those situations where it's not going to be an easy day. But if we commit to it as a community, we can do it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just that I, I think we need to work on this a, a full press and, and figure out what we need to do and do it, uh, with, with intention and measure to, to get that sidewalk in for the, for all the homeowners in Huntington and all, and all the, all the kids and the connected community. So I think we should do, uh, what, you know, whatever we can and work together to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Green, let, let's do this unless there's, there's strenuous objection from a majority of my council colleagues. Um, between the two of us, let's reach out to Mark tomorrow at the road commission and get details regarding the most recent permit and specifically the, the drainage requirement. Um, between the, the two of us, we can reach out to Mr. Shipman and see if he's still amenable to, to relinquishing this and, and identify what the terms of that would be. Uh, and then there might be value at one of our upcoming meetings to have some of these folks who've been involved, um, attend and debrief council on the matter. And I'm thinking specifically somebody from the road commission, since it's their jurisdiction, they have to sign off on it and issue a permit because it's in their right-of-way. Uh, and then the other person, um, who you met, um, would be Joe Maynard, who's been the engineer and designer of the project in, in all three of its iterations, whom Mr. Shipman has, uh, has engaged from, from Washoe Engineering. In your judgment, is there anybody I'm missing that we should engage and have, have, present to, or have invite to come and present to city council?
No, I thi- I think the less is better, especially when, if we just have Mark and Joe, I think we'll cover all the major bases and we'll go there.
Okay, I was trying to think if there was anybody else I was, I was missing. I think those are the, those are the key players. Any additional questions from the dais or from those participating remotely? No? Okay, thank you. Um, I think Mr. Gierba already touched on the last discussion item, which is the reporting of planning commission meetings. Is there anybody who would like to add anything else to that?
I'll just add...
Please.
So I raised this issue with the, the city manager and the mayor several weeks ago. Um, just in the interest of, planning is making some of the most important decisions in our city. Um, not everyone can be there. Having a reporting is a benefit to our community that goes beyond just the minutes. And, and I have attended some planning commission meetings. I've learned a lot. Um, and I think that anything the city can do in the name of transparency is excellent. Um, I appreciate very much that there is light-mindedness on the part of the planning commission, and I expect that to be regularly planned in my house, that reporting. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further to be brought up in the discussion portion of tonight's agenda, Mrs. Dillon, you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to ask that we add to a future agenda. I'd like an update on the hotel.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. I actually owe Bill Long an email sometime later this week, so we can get that either... I can probably get something on, um, if not the seventeenth, and first, certainly our first meeting is a gentleman.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Green, remind me of that, because I can, we can address that at the transition team meeting on Monday, or Monday, Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, if there's nothing else to be brought before city council this evening, we'll proceed to the second public comment period. Uh, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may counter questions. City council, this public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Uh, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? You're good. Thank you. Uh, Clerk Royal, did we receive any additional correspondence or emails? I believe there was one from, um, Mary Hess regarding the Fair Dean property. We've already addressed that, but if you would read her comments, uh, that would be, uh, that would be appreciated.
All right, um, from Mary Hess, she wanted to, 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 to city council, Mr. Farrell signs a sales agreement with section four, complying with city ordinance, maintaining, maintenance of property in adjacent sidewalks. Appears it has been brought to Farrell's attention, given by the city. This is like a treatment question mark. Thank you, Mary Hess.
That's it? Okay.
Now, I don't have any other emails, and there's nothing that was given on Zoom, but I am not attached to Facebook tonight, so if there's anything on Facebook, I do not know.
Okay, my, well, my understanding was we were going to read comments that were submitted to your office in advance, via email, submitted on Zoom, uh, or those who wish to attend in person and, and provide comments or questions. My understanding was we were not monitoring Facebook for public comments.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, okay. Uh, we'll provide folks one last opportunity. If you'd like to type in any remarks, you may do so at the bottom of your screen under the chat icon. We'll give you just fifteen or twenty more seconds. And I would note that our upcoming meetings are on August the seventeenth. We will have a work meeting at 5:30 PM to follow up on our conversation regarding beach sage compensation study. And then we have almost a month off primarily because of Labor Day, and we'll be meeting again on the fourteenth. I'd ask the city clerk one more time, were there any additional comments, questions provided via the chat icon at the bottom of the screen?
No, sir.
Very good. Um, then I would interchange a motion to adjourn our regular meeting at 9:08 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Dillon to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second was at Delarco? Thank you, sir. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.